And Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, I want to just reiterate what Vice Mayor Resnikov said. You guys are exemplify what Campbell PD is. And it's great that you were there and had the training to save this person's life. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you for your service. And I think also really a testament to the training that we get or that you get here in the department. So, thank you.
And Chief Burke?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbons. I just wanted to acknowledge you and the rest of the council for taking the opportunity to recognize these two amazing officers. I know that the support means a lot to all of us, especially the two of them. And we already awarded them the lifesaving award for the Campbell Police Department. I think like was said, these officers are amazing individuals. They do hard work every single day. And I think whether it's going out and saving a life for responding to a crime, they're out there protecting this community. And I'm very grateful to have them as a part of this department. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, gentlemen. Did you have something you'd like to say?
I'll say something for me. I've been at this department a couple of years. I moved from out of state and I've policed in other states and different departments. And I haven't had a chance to say much under Chief. I've expressed it to him, but the city of Campbell is unique in its own support. And people really truly care and want to have a conversation, not just wave and keep going. They want to see how you're doing, make sure you're okay. I've had people on just while I'm patrolling offer me water, cookies, snacks, anything in neighborhoods, which is unique. And then to go along with the department, it's a top notch department. The standard is high and that goes along with our training. And I think because of that, it prepares not only us to for that call, it prepares each and every one of us. It just happened to be us two that got the call, but no doubt that any one of us out there are going to respond and going to deliver that same result to the best we can each and every time we get that call. So, I'm honored to get the award, but I'm also humbled to say that anybody in our department is going to be able to do that. And I hope that you guys see that and see the training we do and understand that it's a phenomenal place to be working.
Thank you.
I'll go off that as well. I just want to say thank you so much for the recognition. We, well, I personally am newer to this department as well. I transferred from another department as well. And I can say that this is the place where I want to spend the rest of my career. We have a great command staff and great department in general, every single officer here. I know they could have done that. All of us hold each other to a high standard. And I just want to say that I love working for this city and I'm very grateful to be here.
Well, thank you very much for enjoying and wanting to work with us because that makes all the difference in the world. You have a job you love to do and you really love doing it here in Campbell. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if we may, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is communications and petitions. There are no communications and petitions at this time. And with that, we will move on to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on any such item. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Do we have any oral requests at this time? I guess, Madam Mayor, we had two individuals sign up tonight, but I only see one online with us is Manol Shafi. Mr. Mashafi, is that correct?
Yes, my name is Manol Shafi and I'm honored to serve as a government and community relations coordinator for Bloom Energy, a clean resilient energy company founded right here in the Silicon Valley. During the past eighteen months, we have learned more than ever the vital role of our frontline hospital and healthcare workers, putting our health before their own throughout the COVID crisis. I'm asking you to join me on August twenty second for our inaugural Stars and Strides Community Run to support and celebrate our frontline hospital workers and the patients they serve. Our ambitious goals for this event will be much more attainable with your participation. First, our financial goal to raise and donate a quarter of a million dollars for the Valley Medical Center Healthcare Clinics, which provides services to more than one million of our neighbors annually, eighty-five percent of whom are low income members of our community. Second, our volunteer goal, four hundred caring volunteers to ensure our participants have a fun and safe experience. To further ensure the safety of our participants and volunteers, we're coordinating with the county health office to ensure all health protocols are followed before, during, and after the event. We're also proactively capping registration, so please register to secure your spot. Tonight, we have three requests. First, please register you and your family at starsandstridesturn.com. For elected leaders, please sign up under the California Water Service Elected Official Executive Five K Challenge. Second, please reach out to your own community members. We have sample texts you can consider to make it easy. Third, we would be honored to work with your professional staff to be included in any online communications between now and race day. After challenging eighteen months, we now have the opportunity to gather a community safely outdoors to celebrate and support our frontline hospital and healthcare workers on August twenty second at Discovery Meadow in San Jose. Please join us and spread the word throughout our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And is our second speaker available, Madam Clerk?
Our second speaker is James Appfel, but I do not see him online with us at the moment.
All right. Well, if necessary, we can see if we can come back, but let's move forward with the meeting at this point. So, I will now read the mayor's announcement. See, I remembered this time, Vice Mayor. The California Energy Commission took a step Wednesday to move the state closer to its hoped-for decarbonization future via wonky but effective means, that is the building code. This council has been there before discussing the building code. The commission unanimously voted to update California's already strict building efficiency standards, which have so far achieved greenhouse gas reductions that equate to taking more than two million cars off the road annually. Among the updates that will be effective, I believe in January of 2023, require certain types of commercial buildings to have rooftop solar and battery storage, implement stricter standards that improve indoor ventilation, ensure that homes using natural gas are electric-ready, and finally encourage efficient energy heat pump technology for space and water heating. Again, we've covered many of those topics. Last week, the city council acted to formally implement a tier-three water rationing ordinance consistent with all local and state agencies, as well as our water supplier, San Jose Water. I encourage you to watch the council meeting on August third, it was item number ten, for a good discussion and clarity on responsibilities. Please visit the council meeting agenda center at www.ci.campbell.ca.us/AgendaCenter. California's anti-price gouging statute, penal code And I think because of that, it prepares not only us to, for that call. It prepares each and every one of us. It just happened to be us two that got the call. But no doubt that any one of us out there are going to respond and going to deliver that same result to the best we can each and every, each and every time we get that call. So, I'm honored to get the award, but I'm also humbled to say that anybody in our department is going to be able to do that. And I hope that you guys see that and see the training we do and understand that it's a, it's a phenomenal place to be working.
Thank you.
I'll go off that as well. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the recognition. We, well, I personally am newer to this department as well. I transferred from another department as well. And I can say that this is the place where I want to spend the rest of my career. We have a great command staff and great department in general, every single officer here. I know they could have done that. All of us hold each other to a high standard. And I just want to say that I love working for this city and I'm, I'm very grateful to be here.
Well, thank you very much for enjoying and wanting to work with us because that makes all the difference in the world. You have a job you love to do and you really love doing it here in Campbell. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if we may, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is communications and petitions. There are no communications and petitions at this time. And with that, we will move on to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on any such item. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Do we have any oral requests at this time? I guess, Madam Mayor, we had two individuals sign up tonight, but I only see one online with us is Manol Shafi. Mr. Mashafi, is that correct?
Yes. My name is Manol Shafi and I'm honored to serve as a government and community relations coordinator for Bloom Energy, a clean resilient energy company founded right here in the Silicon Valley. During the past eighteen months, we have learned more than ever the vital role of our frontline hospital and healthcare workers, putting our health before their own throughout the COVID crisis.
I can always see.
I am asking you to join me on August twenty second for our inaugural Stars and Strides Community Run to support and celebrate our frontline hospital workers and the patients they serve. Our ambitious goals for this event will be much more attainable with your participation. First, our financial goal, to raise and donate a quarter of a million dollars for the Valley Medical Center healthcare clinics, which provide services to more than one million of our neighbors annually, eighty-five percent of whom are low income members of our community. Second, our volunteer goal, four hundred caring volunteers to ensure our participants have a fun and safe experience. To further ensure the safety of our participants and volunteers, we're coordinating with the county health office to ensure all health protocols are followed before, during, and after the event. We're also proactively capping registration, so please register to secure your spot. Tonight, we have three requests. First, please register you and your family at starsandstridestrend.com. For elected leaders, please sign up under the California Water Service Elected Official Executive Five K Challenge. Second, please reach out to your own community members. We have sample texts you can consider to make it easy. Third, we would be honored to work with your professional staff to be included in any online communications between now and race day. After challenging eighteen months, we now have the opportunity to gather a community safely outdoors to celebrate and support our frontline hospital and healthcare workers on August twenty second at Discovery Meadow in San Jose. Please join us and spread the word throughout our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And is our second speaker available, Madam Clerk?
Um, our second speaker is James Appfel, but I do not see him online with us at the moment.
All right. Well, we'll, if necessary, we can see if they, we can come back, but let's move forward with the meeting at this point. So, I will now read the mayor's announcement. See, I remembered this time, Vice Mayor. The California Energy Commission took a step Wednesday to move the state closer to its hoped-for decarbonization future via a wonky but effective means, that is the building code. This council has been there before discussing the building code. The commission unanimously voted to update California's already strict building efficiency standards, which have so far achieved greenhouse gas reductions that equate to taking more than two million cars off the road annually. Among the updates that will be effective, I believe in January of two thousand and twenty-three, require certain types of commercial buildings to have rooftop solar and battery storage, implement stricter standards that improve indoor ventilation, ensure that homes using natural gas are electric-ready, and finally encourage efficient energy heat pump technology for space and water heating. Again, we've covered many of those topics. Last week, the city council acted to formally implement a tier-three water rationing ordinance consistent with all local and state agencies, as well as our water supplier, San Jose Water. I encourage you to watch the council meeting on August third. It was item number ten for a good discussion and clarity on responsibilities. Please visit the council meeting agenda center at www.c i dot campbell dot C A dot U S forward slash agenda center. California's anti-price gouging statute, Penal Code Section three ninety-six, prohibits landlords and other businesses from raising rent or the price of many consumer goods and services by more than ten percent after a state of emergency has been declared by the president, the governor, or local officials. Rent increases are limited to ten percent for the duration of the emergency, irrespective of the duration or whether the unit becomes vacant. For more information or to report price gouging, please visit www dot O A G dot C A dot gov forward slash consumers. Santa Clara County officials announced Monday that a third dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine is now available for people who have compromised immune system. Eligible individuals are encouraged to contact their primary healthcare provider for consideration of the additional dose. The Delta variant is spreading rapidly, particularly among young people. Hospitalizations and death are high for those who are not vaccinated. The Santa Clara County continues to offer broad opportunities for community members to get free COVID nineteen vaccine with expanded hours on evenings and weekends and various pop-up sites throughout the county that do not require an appointment. Scheduling appointments is available for the vaccine and it can be made, excuse me, by anyone who is twelve years of age or older. For more information about scheduling appointments or locating a drop-in vaccination site throughout the county, including local pharmacies, please visit s c c free vax dot org. Next, the city clerk's office is accepting applications for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measure O. The city council invites Campbell residents eighteen years of age or older who are not currently city employees, officials of the city, vendors, contractors, or consultants of the city, or commissioners currently serving on a commission related to the city can apply. Applications may be obtained from the city clerk's office or at the city's website, which is www.c i dot campbell dot C A dot U S forward slash one five seven forward slash boards dash commissions. And the applications must be returned no later than September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one by five P M. For more information, please contact the city clerk's office at four oh eight eight six six two one one seven or clerk's office at campbell C A dot gov. Fall registration. The registration for fall recreation classes is underway. Don't forget to visit www dot campbell C A dot gov forward recreation to learn more. The October Fun Run will take place in person this year on Saturday, October sixteenth. Recreation, I'm sorry, registration is open. Please visit www campbell C A dot gov forward slash recreation to learn more. The Fall Garden Concert Series at the Ainsley House begins Sunday, August twenty ninth with the Jazz Guitar Show featuring Chris Shaheen and Mason Razvai. Tickets at twenty-five dollars and can be purchased at www dot campbell museums with an S dot com. The Eleventh Annual Caregiver Count. This is a conference tailored specifically for family caregivers who are caring for older adults. The conference will be held virtually on Zoom for four consecutive weeks, September eleventh, eighteen, twenty-five, and October second. Attendees will hear from informative speakers on the topics of caregivers, self-care, taking care of someone with mental health needs, advanced care planning, and adult daycare. There is no fee for this conference. For more information and to register, visit www dot caregivers C A R E G I V E R S count C O U N T. All, all three words run together, dot net. And I'm going to add two more, which is, don't forget, voting is September fourteenth. And by now, all of you should have received your vote by mail. And you may return it postage-free. And there is a tracking mechanism for your ballot. So, voting is September fourteenth or earlier. And also, there is a very special opportunity this coming Wednesday, tomorrow night, August eighteenth, from six to seven forty, seven thirty P M. It is the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative called Let's Talk Housing. And you may register for that at H T T P S colon forward slash forward slash B I T dot L Y forward slash countywide meeting. That's all three words together, countywide meeting dash three. It will be in English and Spanish information. We are, as you may know, doing our housing element update. And this is a, a great opportunity to work with two other cities. I believe it's Los, I think it's Cupertino and Los Gatos. And Campbell will have a, a community's discussion on housing. So, please join that conversation if you can. And with that, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be acted on in one motion. We have items two through six. Are there any council members or members of the public that would like to pull an item of consent on the calendar?
Nothing from the public, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing none, I would accept a motion on consent calendars, items two through six.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Resnikoff, seconded by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff.
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons.
Aye. Thank you very much. We now move on to the next section of the meeting, which is public hearings and introduction of ordinances. We have several items under this. However, I will read the introduction and then recuse myself from the first item number seven. The applicants and appellants and their representatives may be allowed up to a total of five minutes for opening statements and up to a total of three minutes maximum for closing statements. And I am recusing an item number seven because of a longstanding prior professional relationship with the applicant of this item. So, I will disappear and turn the gavel over to Vice Mayor Resnikoff.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Left me a nice, uh, long, long piece to read here, but I'll introduce the item seven. Public hearing to consider the application P L N twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine by Gordon Wong of G K W Architects for a planned development permit to allow the construction of an approximately fifty-foot-tall mixed-use building. It's fifteen apartment units and twenty-one hundred and six square feet of ground floor commercial space. It's at grade and underground parking and associated site improvements. A tentative parcel map to allow the merger of two parcels. Dedication of additional public right-of-way, and new public utility easements. The abandonment of existing public utility easements. A tree removal permit to allow the removal of ten onsite trees. A density bonus to allow reduction in required parking. And a variance to allow the placement of a new utility pole for property located in twenty-five seventy-five and twenty-five eighty-five South Winchester Boulevard in the P D or Plan Development Zoning District. And we have a presentation, I'm sure, and working on ours, our planner, Stephen Rhodes.
Go ahead, Stephen. Yeah, thank you and a good evening, Vice Mayor Resnikoff and members of the city council. To get us started, this particular project site comprises two parcels, which are located in the northwest corner of South Manchester Boulevard and Fireway. The project site is bordered by a small commercial center to the north and a single-family residence to the west. The site has developed two single-family homes, which would be removed as part of the project. And the project site is located in the P D or Plan Development Zoning District with a mixed-use general plan land use designation of residential, commercial, professional office. The applicant is seeking proposal, is seeking approval of a planned development permit to allow for the construction of approximately fifty-foot-tall mixed-use building for fifteen apartment units and three ground floor commercial tenants with at-grade and underground parking and associated site improvements, a tentative parcel map to allow for the merger of the two parcels, dedication of additional public right-of-way, and the creation of new public utility easements, as well as abandonment of existing public utility easements, and a tree removal permit to allow for the removal of ten onsite trees. The project also entails a density bonus to allow for the reduction required parking and a variance to allow the placement of a new utility pole. So, as a housing project, it's important to recognize recent changes to state law, which have made it more difficult for cities to deny housing projects in recent years. Under the Housing Accountability Act, the project may have been, may not be denied or conditioned to lower its density unless it's found to be in violation of a specific or objective of general plan or zoning standard or result in a specific adverse impact to public health and safety. That said, changes still may be requested for the policies of general plan, provided that they do not render the project infeasible or reduce its density. So, as a density bonus project, the project qualifies for up to a thirty-five percent density bonus as well as a reduced parking standard exchange for providing eleven percent of the total units to very low-income households. The project also qualifies for concessions and waivers, but as presented, is only seeking a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. So, to assist the city in the review, in the review of this particular project, the city hired Mark Sandoval of M S A Architects. And he's the city's architectural advisor. Help prepare an architectural report. The project plans were revised and responsive feedback provided by the city's architectural advisor, as well as the Site and Architecture Review Committee. A few of the changes made included raising ceiling height of the commercial tenant spaces on the ground floor, adding wrought iron details to north and south elevations for enhanced architectural interest and changing the color tone from white to neutral beige and adding more interesting pedestrian entry point on the ground floor. Uh, back in June, the planning commission held a public hearing on the subject item. The commission reviewed changes to plans made in response to the SARC feedback and primarily discussed comments raised by the, by the city's architectural advisor. Two residents in Fireway attended the meeting, seeking clarification on various project details, such as how parking would be managed in Fireway. Effectively, a small segment of Fireway would be painted red, curb to maintain a set sightlines into a, a new driveway, which would be added. Um, seeking clarification how the, the project would extend median on Winchester. So, there isn't, there's a, the project does include a proposal to extend the median on Winchester to preclude illegal left-hand turn lanes into the project site. And seeking confirmation that the lights of the project would be pointed downward, which they will. After due consideration, the planning commission adopted a unanimous decision, a seven oh decision to recommend approval of the project. Uh, in regard to parking, this particular project is required to provide twenty-four parking spaces, uh, which were a total of thirty-four have been provided. So, they're really, although that they are requesting a reduced parking standard from this, from the, uh, the city standard, they are actually exceeding the state density bonus parking requirement. Uh, to assist in the review of site circulation and traffic, the city hired W Trans to prepare a focused transportation analysis of the project. The report generally concluded the site layout was appropriate and the sightlines at the driveways were adequate for the approach, for the anticipated approach speeds. The report also recommended extending the South Manchester Boulevard median, again, as mentioned, to deter left, uh, turn maneuvers into the project. And also required landscaping at the corner to be well-maintained and also prohibited the parking on Fireway with that red curb, which I also just mentioned. Uh, in regard to traffic generation, the project was well below the thresholds to warrant a traffic impact analysis, having been screened out by the guidelines established by Santa Clara County Transportation Authority, as well as the city's adopted B M P policy, which considered the product size type and approximately light rail. The applicant's proposal does involve a tree removal permit and, as a result, will result in a removal of ten trees to, uh, which would conflict with the proposed improvements. Uh, as replacement, um, the applicant, it is a comprehensive landscaping plan that includes three new twenty-four-inch trees on site, as well as, uh, you know, ground, ground shrubs and covering throughout the, the site. Uh, to facilitate the undergrounding of the, of all overhead lines, all, all overhead service and frontage lines, the app proposal does include a request for a variance to allow for the placement of a new wood utility pole. Uh, the image here on screen is kind of showing where that new pole would most likely be placed. And all the overhead lines, um, immediately in front of the product site would be removed. With that said, and in consideration of the applicant's proposal, staff is recommending that city council introduce an ordinance and adopt resolutions approving the request. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. So, at this point, let's first go to any questions from council for staff. And I've got to bear with me, I'll scroll through to see if anybody's, nothing, Verlandre, I think I see your hand.
Yeah, if Stephen can take down the slide, it makes it easier for you.
Thank you.
Um, Stephen, I have a question. There's a zero lot line on the north side. What happens if another large development comes forward? Do they have to have a setback or do they both have a zero lot line?
Well, on the north side, the property to the north would be governed by the Winchester Boulevard Master Plan. This particular site's outside the boundary lines of that, so it would be governed by whatever the development standards applicable to that property would be. Uh, I would say that this, generally speaking, this building is, the upper story is the second, the second floor and beyond are offset several feet from that property line to the north. What you're seeing is the, the, the kind of the down ramp area, which is be at that zero lot line.
Okay, great. Thanks. Good presentation.
Councilmember Lopez.
I, I've got a question, Stephen, and if this is more appropriate for, for the applicant, then, uh, you know, maybe they can answer it later. But I just wanted to understand why they're seeking the reduction in parking, if they're actually going to be exceeding the required number. And can, can that subject that number to any change at a later date if we approve that? Yeah, perhaps it's a clarification. So, uh, as part of our public noticing procedures, we're trying to make it clear to the public exactly what allowances of the density bonus request are being sought by the applicant. So, compared to the city's standards, there is a reduction in the required number of parking spaces, which are granted by right as a transit-oriented density bonus project. So, it's not really that they're seeking, I mean, they're effectively seeking to follow the state density bonus transit-oriented parking standards. And they happen to exceed those. Uh, but in so doing, they are seeking a reduction from the city standard. So, hopefully that clarifies. Um, I know it's kind of a nuanced discussion point, but it's a, it's an important one to make. Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? So, seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. We have, uh, I'm sure representative of the applicant, I see Mr. Wong is on the call. Do you want to speak at this point?
Uh, actually, no, I don't. Okay.
Is there, is there anybody like to speak on your, is anybody like to speak on your behalf?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's fair enough. Uh, is there any other, uh, Madam City Clerk, is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this item?
Uh, no, Vice Mayor, nobody has signed up for this item.
Okay, then what we'll do at that point is we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for comments, discussion, motion. You want to start?
The wrong hand.
You always start. You always start. Councilmember Landry.
Okay, um, I personally think this is a pretty cool building. Um, the architect review person said it was an eclectic, has an eclectic rhythm. Um, and that he successfully placed a four-story building on a very small lot. And although initially it may seem to be out of place with the surrounding architecture, as building, other buildings come forward, it'll start blending in. Um, but it's pretty cool because it's sloped at an angle back towards the houses. They gave them plenty of setback. And it's a, I haven't seen a building like this in Campbell that has that kind of sloped feature to it. So, I agree this eclectic rhythm is pretty cool. And I look forward to seeing more housing in Campbell.
Thank you. That's number five, you're Lopez. Comments or not?
I, I like.
Oh, Councilmember, Councilmember Bybee.
I was just going to say I like the, the project. I like the design. I, I think it's going to, initially, it's going to be large, but I think it'll blend in nicely. And, um, we'll be, you know, setting maybe a standard for, for future development in there. So, thank you for the, the work on it. And I also wanted to compliment staff on the staff report today. It was very And I also wanted to compliment staff on the staff report today. It was very thorough and very easy to follow. Thank you.
And I just want to say in addition to what's been said about the, the design, I really appreciate the. Creative use of density for what's a, a, a pretty small parcel, so. Always appreciating that.
Great, and I'll just comment. You know, it's rare we see projects come in with, I think with this much support across the board, without a lot of requests for concessions. And with unanimous support. It was a good process. So thank you, because I think you, I think you worked well with everybody during the process to bring in a project that's going to look very nice there. So appreciate that very much. And let me see, is there a motion? Would like somebody to go forward?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the council introduced an ordinance approving a planned development permit. Adopt a resolution approving a tentative parcel map. Adopt a resolution approving a tree removal permit and adopt a resolution approving a variance.
I'll second.
The motion from Councilmember Landry, second from Councilmember Bybee. Do we have a roll call vote please?
Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff.
Hi.
And Mayor Gimmins has recused.
That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Wong. Thank you for the project. Good luck moving forward. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are such a great council. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff, I believe we need to read the full title of the ordinance and take.
Oh, you need to do, you need to correct. Sorry about, sorry about out of practice.
Alright, and this being an ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell approving a planned development permit. To allow the construction of an approximately fifty-foot tall mixed-use building, fifteen apartment units. And two thousand seventy-nine square feet of ground floor commercial space. With at-grade and underground parking and associated site improvements with a density bonus to allow a reduction in required parking. For property located at twenty-five seventy-five and twenty-five eighty-five South Winchester Boulevard. Project file number PLN two zero one nine dash three nine. And we will need another motion to waive the full reading of the ordinance. I saw move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bybee, second by Councilmember Landry. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Bybee. Hi. Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resnikoff.
Hi.
And Mayor Gimmins has recused.
So this time we're actually done. And Councilmember Bybee, thank you, because you were flagging me down trying to, trying to get the ordinance in. I saw that. This is, I came by, so same back. So thank you very much. That includes item seven. We'll move to item eight and bring back Mayor. I'm looking on my, I don't see you on my screen. There, Stumpf, I see, I see now coming off. Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you.
We're, so we're up to item eight, which point I will, it's a ping-pong match. I will recuse an item eight. As I will an item ten, because of proximity of the Measure O and Police Station project to my residence within five hundred feet. So I'm going to recuse now. I'll come back though in between for item nine.
And it is a new system to tell you when to come back on too, so that'll help. Alright, thank you for doing that duty. Number eight, this is adopt the mitigated negative declaration for Measure O Civic Center Improvement Project. This is a recommended action for the city council to adopt a resolution, adopting the mitigated negative declaration for Measure O. And it's project number twenty-one dash MM, and I believe, are we having a presentation by Director Capurso? Or Senior Engineer Stores?
You will hear from me first and I will be introducing our consultant. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Nice to see you all this evening. So as the mayor says, we are here for the environmental review regarding the Measure O project, specifically recommending the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. Although you have seen a various aspects of Measure O come before you for projects specifically rated to the PD building in the library over the last several months. The last time that the council saw an item related to the environmental review of Measure O was in May of twenty twenty. With at that time, you authorized staff to issue an RFP for environmental consultant services for the project. And since then, several proposals were received and staff selected and moved forward with the, with the contract. Authorizing David J. Powers and Associates to perform the work. And so to present the findings of the environmental review will be the firm president, Mr. Akoni Danielson. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Danielson.
Thank you, Todd. Do you have my PowerPoint set up or am I showing my screen?
It would be good if you could share your screen. I think we have it as a backup if you need it, but if you've got it, I would recommend going with that.
Okay. One second here.
Adam, Madam Clerk, does he have permission to share screen? There you go.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So thank you again for allowing me to speak, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As Todd mentioned, I'm Akoni Danielson with David J. Power Associates. We assisted the city with the environmental analysis for the Civic Center project. So briefly, the Civic Center project is a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, which is the state's environmental review law. And the purpose of the environmental review law SEQA is to analyze and disclose significant environmental effects. Identify ways to avoid or reduce those effects through mitigation where possible and to provide for public input. And the, as Todd mentioned, the council needs to adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the city to begin taking actions to implement the project. So we assisted the city with preparation was called an initial study, which is an evaluation of a number of environmental topics. There's about twenty overall. Different topics touching on all different aspects of the environment. There were several topics identified here on this slide where we engaged subject matter experts to do detailed technical studies. So the initial study was supported by technical studies that looked at the air quality and greenhouse gas emissions from the development. Both while it's under construction and once the buildings are occupied. They also looked at the noise and vibration effects of the construction process and again, once the buildings are occupied. There are, there's an historic house on the Civic Center and there are surrounding properties with historic buildings. So we did a historic analysis by qualified historian. The site has a number of trees, so we evaluated those for their location, condition and type. See what sort of effect would, would happen. We did what's called a phase one environmental assessment. That's where we looked at past uses of the site to see if there was potential for soil or groundwater contamination. Or other sources of hazardous materials on the site. And then we also engaged a traffic engineer to look at how the property would be accessed and how traffic would flow. The project resulted in what's called the, the analysis, I should say, resulted what's called a mitigated negative declaration. That's a fancy way of saying. Effects are all less than significant. We don't have to do an environmental impact report for this type of project. Because effects are either, there's no impact, that there's not a change to a resource, or it's less than significant. Or in cases where effects could be significant, the project incorporates mitigation, either during construction or once the buildings are occupied. So to touch on a few of the, the effects that were significant, where mitigation was identified. These were primarily construction-related and this is a site that is surrounded by housing and other uses. And so as is typical of a redevelopment of an existing site in the Bay Area, when you do construction near other uses such as housing, there's a need for mitigation. So we identify, you know, very typical, ordinary construction mitigation to minimize dust, both for. The Ainsley House on the Civic Center and then housing across the street. Also, construction equipment uses diesel engines, which produce toxic emissions and they can be hazardous to human health. We modeled that and identified the need for mitigation that'll be implemented to keep people who are living near the site safe. We also looked at the effects, the potential for biological resource effects, which in this case, the site has trees. Those trees can be used by birds during the breeding season. And so, you know, consistent with state and federal law, there will need to be surveys to protect nesting activity if construction happens during the breeding season. Very typical. Cultural resources, again, as I mentioned before, there are historic resources in the area. Those were evaluated by qualified historian. For impacts and they concluded that the proposed design is compatible. You identify that as with most construction projects in the Bay Area, when you're disturbing ground. You have the potential to hit something you might not know is there. So we have. Pretty typical mitigation there for contractors to follow in the event that they encounter soil or materials that indicate. You know, human habitation or human remains in effect. So also, so again, very typical. Some other issues that we had identified, geology here, we're talking about paleontological resources, which are fossilized. Remains of plants and animals. Again, we don't expect it to be encountered, but in the event that it is found, we have measures to protect against that. As I mentioned, the phase one environmental site assessment identified that because of the past use of the property going back into the eighteen hundreds, there was farming activity. There's the potential that the soil over time had accumulated lead and residual agricultural pesticides. And that's a very common condition for the Santa Clara Valley. And also the, some of the buildings on site are older. They predate some of the laws that ban the use of lead-based paint and asbestos in building materials. And so again, those are very common issues you deal with on a construction site where demolishing older buildings. And so, you know, very typical standard surveys will be conducted by contractors to appropriately handle any lead-based paint or asbestos. That might be present in the buildings that are being removed. We evaluated the noise effects of the project, we hired an engineer for that. And again, we have very typical requirements for construction activity that you would see applied to most new projects in your city. Usually we identified was here was that the police operations building will have mechanical equipment on the roof. And, you know, there are homes nearby across the street and to ensure that those, that, that the mechanical equipment is not exceeding the city's noise standards. There will need to be an engineer involved in the review of those, of that equipment at the design stage to again assure that they're being located appropriately. Or shielding is, is implemented if necessary. Again, so that the city's noise standards are met by the equipment that's there long-term. And all other environmental effects were less insignificant, you know, things like water supply or utilities. Minerals, public services, aesthetics, they were all. Not requiring any mitigation whatsoever. And then just to conclude, the, because I mentioned, one of the objectives of the secret process is to facilitate public participation. And so the city circulated the environmental analysis, what's called the notice of intent to adopt the mitigated negative declaration. Starting July first, the review process is a twenty-day review process, so it concluded a week ago. And the city didn't receive any comments from a public agency such as, you know, the Water District or. The VTA or an adjoining city or the county. So really, there was no public interest from other public agencies. We did, the city did receive an email from a couple residents who live across First Street. I believe that's included in your packet and the, their concerns were regarding the, you know, noting that the Ainsley House was on the property. And just to be sure that the recommendations of the historic analysis were being followed in the design, particularly with regard to a new fence that's being installed. And that, that's confirmed. I mean, that, that the city is intending through its design process to follow those recommendations. The residents were also concerned about noise, both, there's, there are some, there's some mechanical equipment, I guess, that's on city hall today. That was affecting them and I think the staffs looked into that. And then additionally, as I mentioned, they were concerned about the new equipment that would be installed. And again, we've assured them that the mitigation measure that we've included requires an acoustical engineer to, to model. And verify that the new equipment's going to meet the city's noise standards. The responses, I'm sorry, the, the comment that was received was responded to in writing and that memo has been provided to the council. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. I'll turn it back to Todd. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd, I'm going to go to council questions if that's appropriate for you. Okay. Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Lopez.
Um, I, I was just wondering if staff could further address the concerns brought up in letter from the Tamiya Nation. I know is outside the comment period and I didn't quite have the chance to discuss with staff, so just wanted to hear a bit more.
I don't know if Mr. Danielson has seen that yet. We received that late today, I think.
I have. I'm happy to speak to it if the staff would like to.
Sure, I, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, the, the city received the, a letter from the Tamiya Nation, which is a local tribe in the, in the area. And they've requested that the city consult with the tribe on this particular project. The, the environmental process, SEQA, was amended last decade to provide a formal process for tribes to consult. With lead agencies, cities, counties, as they were undertaking projects. It was built into the SEQA process. And I can say that the city has followed that process with this project. The, the way that it works, the law was called AB fifty-two. And the way it works is that tribes have the opportunity to opt into this process by requesting notification of a given city. Or county or school district, whoever the lead agency is. And so a tribe contacts the city and says, we'd like to be notified of projects that are undergoing secret review. That aren't exempt. So the more complicated ones, such as this one. At the time that the city released its notice for this project that I mentioned back in, in late July. The city hadn't received any requests from this tribe. So the city, at the time it released this document, had complied with AB fifty-two. Because no request for either notification or consultation had been made. So again, the city has satisfied its obligation to do SEQA. The tribe's request is unfortunately coming very late in the process. And so at this point, you know, there's, the, the tribes have requested it's so late, there's really no opportunity for the city to, to. Fulfill the intent of the law, because again, the city has circulated its document for public review. Consultation is supposed to require before, is supposed to start before that happens. So again, the, the city followed all processes. No tribes had requested notification prior to the city's release of the draft mitigated negative declaration. And so at this point, you know, the tribe has asked for consultation. The city, you know, is free to meet with them going forward as you implement this project. But at this point, you know, you're not obligated to stop the process and, and do any additional SEQA. And you've satisfied the requirements as they existed at the time you circulated the document.
And has there been a response from city staff to the, to, to the writer of that letter?
As of this point, council member, there has not, as the mayor pointed out, we received this, you know, fairly late in the game. But our intent is to, is to reach out and, and, and have a conversation with them. Within the week if possible and, and we'll see what the, what the most appropriate follow-up is. But, 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 but just given the, the relatively late notice, we were not able to make contact with them today. So we will, we will reach out over the, over the next couple of days.
Yeah, understandably. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Landry. You're muted.
Famous last words. Thank you very much for the presentation. So a couple of questions. I'm going to follow on to the one about the native tribes. I noticed in the archaeological section for construction, it says that should they find anything that they will then report it. It does not mention to have an archaeologist on site during grading. And I would encourage us to have that in the bidding documents. That during the site preparation and grading aspect, that there is archaeologist on site. And that might help address some of their concerns. On page one forty-four of the EIR regarding bicycle facilities. It says the project will be required per LUT dash two point one C. That you will be required to provide bicycle parking showers and changing facilities. I know the police department will have those, but I don't think the library building has those facilities in there. Question to staff is how will that be accommodated?
Well, the intent at this point is that it would be accommodated in, in the police building and not in the library. So I mean, we, we would not necessarily be able to accommodate that on a building-by-building basis, but the project accommodates that.
Okay, so library staff, if they want to ride their bikes and take a shower and have changing, what would they do?
That's a great question. They'd be able to ride their bike and lock their bike, but there would not be a shower available in the library.
But there is a changing facility?
There is a single-use restroom, as you will recall, at the lower level, which, you know, presumably could be used for that. You know, that probably bears some further conversation with the library to see if, if they could make that accommodation in a staff area. But at this point, I could not tell you that, couldn't I guarantee you that that's in there? But we'd have to ask the library if there is a way to reasonably accommodate that in staff area.
Okay, well, the EIR says you have to provide it in general plan policy, LUT dash two point one C says we have to provide it. So please follow up on that. I noticed under the traffic study, it does mention new crosswalks at the grand intersections. But it does not mention whether we need new stop signs. Are we saying we don't need new stop signs on First Street? Are we saying we don't need new stop signs on First Street? Because there has been some accidents there. And if you're going to add crosswalks, you're going to have a non-stopping intersection.
At this point, stop signs are not warranted, nor were they, I mean, as part of the environmental analysis, they were not found to be. Required as a mitigation measure that doesn't preclude the city from analyzing that further. But at this, it's not required as a mitigation measure.
So I just would encourage staff to pursue that because we are adding new crosswalks. And then I forget what page number it mentions accessibility. And right now, if you get off the bus, it is a very circuitous route of accessible path of travel. To the city hall and the new police building. Are we going to be addressing that during our development of the construction drawings? The sidewalk on Civic Center isn't compliant.
Yes, you are.
Todd, you know who's going to ask these questions?
No, no, I know. I I mean, it's interesting that you asked that today because we actually spent a fair amount of time going around the library and doing some analysis of the trees and the root structure. And we know that that sidewalk is woefully inadequate from an ADA perspective. And it's more than likely going to have some some impacts to the to the adjacent trees. Probably, I mean, I again, not necessarily something that we can solve as part of the environmental analysis. But when we come back, the next time we talk to you about the library project or potentially even sooner. We're we're going to have to, we're going to present to you a plan how that can be made ADA compliant. But it's not going to be, shall I say, it's very likely not going to be without impacts.
Great. And then. The drawings or the EIR talks about tree and what trees are being removed, and it only mentions the tree at the police building. And if you look at the landscape plan for the library, there is another tree removed. And also the two trees that are the ones on the bank are in serious decline right now. If those do die, is are we having any mitigation ratio for new trees planted?
If they are removed as part of the project, then we would have to do that. The that the intent at this point is not to remove those trees. So you know, our our hope is that we're going to be able to keep, we understand those trees are stressed and they are in declining health. And at this point, the as I say, the intent is to retain those in their current location. But there are some challenges there that we will most likely need to come back and discuss with council.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Are there other questions? All right, I had some questions earlier and I will reference them during the discussion point. Part of the meeting. And if seeing no further questions, I will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, not on this item.
Thank you very much. We will now close the public hearing. And I'll just take advantage and just offer that I had some questions. And there were answers, but they didn't answer the questions I was asking. So going back to what Mr. Danielson said, the purpose of the EIR in no small measure is to document the project. Identify mitigations that are appropriate and to get public input. So that's where my comments are coming from. There's nothing to be done at this point, but for a project of this size in a substantively residential area on three sides and fairly dense residential. It seems very odd to me that we had no comments. I mean, that just strikes me as being odd. I offer that in the future, I think we have to be a little bit more aggressive. And, you know, a review period when we have no comments and no comments and no comments, that there may have been a glitch. So that's that's generally a telltale sign when you get absolutely nothing back. So I offer that as a concern. I don't recall finding anything if it was there. I missed it. There's a need for dust control and landscaping protection and so forth. Should there be a sentence or is there a reference to using non potable water? That's a real important thing right now.
I do not believe there is a reference to that, but under the stage three guidelines, which you again referenced early, all of our at the time of construction. If we still find ourselves under stage three or worse, our our construction documents will reflect that.
Okay, that's one of my main concern is it gets in the construction documents, so it's properly included in the cost. I asked a question about hazmat and I read the document and the response. My question was not so much about hazmat. On the site and on the surface of the of the buildings and the demolition. But because it didn't seem to me that the scope of the work of the EIR specifically addressed. The renovation of the lower level of the city hall in the current PD space. And that is being totally gutted and totally redone with offices fully functional for public and staff above. So my question was, is there any additional mitigation for hazmat and or noise? For that space, I know you can tape it all off and you've got general rules, but your your documentation didn't seem to acknowledge that it's a. Existing physical building, a whole level with functioning spaces.
I don't have anything to, let me first go back to Mr. Danielson to see if there's anything that you can add. I I don't, I don't believe that there is anything more there than the way you've seen in the document.
So.
That's correct. I mean, the the concern is that for buildings that are being renovated, you're asking, will there be the release of, you know, asbestos or lead based paint? Into that environment where occupants are are going to be continuing to.
Yeah, what are the protect, what environmental protections would be appropriate in to reference? Knowing that it's not just a vacated building, it's actually a functioning building.
There are in the hazmat section, there's a regulatory setting section to that, and that describes the state government code, Cal OSHA requirements for renovations. So the lead based paint and asbestos that's in a building that is intended to remain, it gets regulated summarily, that yeah, that that is protected through existing codes and regulations through the state.
Good, thank you. Was there anything about glass and bird migration? We've had a lot of issues. There's a lot of glass on these buildings, particularly the police building. And we do have active community members worried about birds and migrating birds. So do we have anything that we need to put in this document or in the the construction documents? Anything to mitigate?
Not that I'm aware. I mean, I think the only reference to the to migratory birds had to do with 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 tree removals and being sensitive to when trees could be removed. I do not recall seeing anything in there having to do with, because I think your concern is that birds fly into glass and and I I don't think that's in there. I don't know that.
That is a general, yeah, that is a general concern for for all buildings. We didn't identify this site as being particularly sensitive for that issue, you know, it's not all that close to the creek. We tend to see that as an issue closer to the to the bay as well. So this building didn't stand out in particular because of its location. You know, it is something that, you know, I guess, I almost think for Todd, but you know, it's something that could be further explored through the design process. If the city has bird safe design guidelines in general, you could see to what extent those are applicable here.
That's something to follow up on, then I would suggest. Thank you. And I support Councilwoman Landry's comments about the ADA access. And probably the most significant comment I have, and I know you attempted to answer it earlier, is on the historic analysis. To my knowledge, the your historian did not contact the city staff responsible for the Ainsley House and the museum. And there was no acknowledgement that the house is having settlement issues, it's having cracks, it's having Boeing floors. There's a lot of. Idiosyncratic issues that. Put the building perhaps more at risk. It was put in in a site that was an old street. There was excavation of utilities and relocation of utilities, a whole new basement put in, all of those factors. So. I I did not feel that the document really addressed the potential need to. Keep track of, to observe, to make sure that there wasn't additional settlement. And the the fact that the building itself contained artifacts. And that the ventilation system and the and the, what do you call it, leaded glass windows? And other and the whole roof system, all of that make the the building not airtight. And they need very, very cautiously maintained physical environment. So if your purpose in the document is to identify mitigation and for me, mitigation that impacts the cost. I would want to to ask, is there something a little more specific that you can address? To because the the Ainsley House is more than a, it kind of, forgive me for saying this, but it sort of poo-pooed. The house, it didn't recognize the value. There was a comment in there about AES dash three saying it was no impact to the existing visual character. Well, the building was specifically located, sighted, the gardens were put in, the everything, the walkways, all were recreation. The second floor windows look out into trees, that's going to change. So it just felt to me there was a little bit. Generic response for what we have as a significant community asset.
So would you like me to respond?
Yeah, is there anything you would recommend?
Yeah, so. Yes, so the, I would say that the compatibility of the new construction is addressed more in the cultural resources section rather than aesthetics. Because again, we're worried about Ainsley as a cultural resource first and foremost. And so that's where again, we did retain a historic architect who looked at that very carefully. And in his professional opinion, he found that the design was compatible. I don't think he got into the level of, you know, existing conditions of the Ainsley House and settlements and cracking that you've described. You know, that is something that the city could further explore as you proceed with the project. The the potential for the project to affect the Ainsley House during construction was mostly considered, I'd say, in the noise study. Where the engineer looked at the potential for construction vibration to affect the Ainsley House. And based upon their modeling, applying the Caltrans thresholds that we use for historic buildings, they did not see. That the construction process was going to substantially, you know, wouldn't affect the integrity of the Ainsley House. They they didn't feel that there was a need for any particular special mitigation mitigation measures during construction, at least with regard to vibration. But, you know, it it sounds like it's something that you're particularly concerned about, and it is something that can be further explored through the design process.
Yeah, it just seemed odd that your consultant never contacted the city staff regarding the property. So that's that's what led to my concern. So I would say that that's another item that the city needs to be sure and work with on the contract documents. To make sure that there is some way of protecting, measuring, tracking the impact of the construction. And and I do think it's important to acknowledge that the PD building will impact the visual. Aesthetic from the inside of the building out. I mean, there's nothing to be done about it in that particular sense that I'm aware of. I don't think, you know, it's an issue of a landscaper or anything, but again, it it is occurring, it is an impact. So I just think it needs to be acknowledged and an opportunity given to protect as much as we can. Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any comments or I would, yes, Councilwoman Landry? You're muted.
She didn't hear me just cuss, did she? I saw, I was trying to find in the hazmat report. I think it mentioned something about an old case where the fuel tanks, and I think it ended in ninety one. Are we moving or relocating any of the fuel tanks, pumps, any of that?
We are not relocating the tanks, but we are relocating the pumps.
Okay, is there any mitigation needed for that?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, I don't find a reference in there that that's being are being moved. And I think we should tent the house, Liz. I said that earlier, with all the air gaps and the dust that's going to occur, I don't see how during demolition that we cannot tent the house. I think that's very critical to maintain the internal integrity, but also the air ventilation system. We don't want to have to be replacing filters and all that stuff. So I'll just, I asked the questions, would like to just make the comments that I think we do need to have an archaeologist on site during grading operations. Mostly for the police department. And that then notify the tribes that then they would have the opportunity to come out if they wanted to during that observation. I want to have you guys follow up on the bike lockers, shower, changing facility, the stop signs. The crosswalks and the ADA. Other than that, I think everything was pretty nice and I always appreciate the work of David J. Powers. I've been working with you guys for thirty years, I think. So those are my main comments and I think tent the house.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councilmember Lopez? I think you had a hand raised.
Yeah, I I just want to say that I'm supportive of. Staff's notifying the the Tamiya Nation of getting back them promptly. Clearly, the, you know, the the timeline and any of the issues is is not on staff at all, and I I think that you're responding appropriately. And I hope there can be some collaborative discussion of ways to engage. Whether that that includes, you know, potentially having an archaeologist on site, if that would help mitigate some of their their concerns. I think that should be something that that's explored. But but appreciate staff's response to it, given the the short timeline. So thank you for that. And and also just want to similarly voice concerns as to what's been said with the the Ainsley House. You know, I I think we probably should explore tenting as well, just because otherwise I think we may have more long term. Issues that end up being more costly to deal with, so that that would be a concern to me. And Mayor, appreciate that you've been a champion for for the Ainsley House and the the impact of of this project that that's. Going to be important.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, so I think I have just a procedural question. I think. Staff and council would like to move forward with approval of the acceptance of the CEQA document. This evening to get allow the projects to continue to move forward. My question is how best to handle the items? And Councilwoman Landry just gave the same list that I was. Had written down, the archaeologist, the Ainsley House, the bike and showers, the stop sign and the crosswalk. The ADA path of travel and also trees. And. I think those were the remaining outstanding items. So I'm going to ask Todd and then Councilwoman Landry.
Yeah, I guess I'm a I'm a bit. At a loss for some of that because I don't know that some of those are are all mitigation measures so much as they are construction elements.
I don't, I don't personally, I don't care whether we call them mitigation EIR issues or construction issues. I think the the concern is that they get addressed and what's what's the way to make sure they do?
Well, I, okay, I understand that, but I'm not so sure that they all get addressed. In the, I mean, is the direction to do these things or to analyze whether they're all needed? I think would be my question back to you then, because certainly things like ADA access are are black and white. I still don't know that a stop sign and crosswalks is needed for the project if the environmental doesn't identify it. And if a stop sign warrant and. And if a stop sign warrant and traffic volumes don't meet the threshold, is there council direction to still move forward with these things even if they don't meet our normal thresholds? So because it's not a mitigation measure, it almost becomes more of an elective measure.
So here's where we're trying to be cool. I'm trying to be flexible and open minded here about what is needed in terms of the environmental document. So I thought Councilwoman Landry gave an excellent comment, which is they're recommending a crosswalk. Well, that's at across the area that does not have a stop sign. And the other direction does have a stop sign and there have been accidents. And if you are adding a pedestrian walkway, it seems that a can a strong consideration would be putting in stop signs.
I'm not so sure that that was the recommendation for the crosswalks is is my point. I'm not so sure it was repeated as I understand it. My understanding was that there are not additional crosswalks called for across First Street.
Councilwoman Landry, can you back me up and back up your repeat, go back to what you said and maybe I misunderstood?
I tried to quickly go back through again. I know it mentions adding crosswalks and whether it was across First Street from PD to the housing or whether it was across Drake Grant. I I just wanted to bring up, it mentions crosswalks and it does not mention stop signs. And Liz, I had one more thing that I forgot to mention.
Let's finish, let's finish this and then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
So to answer Director Capurso's question, he's asking council how to move forward on these outstanding issues. I'm going to anticipate that council members do want to move forward with the approval of the SEQA document this evening. But there's been very good conversation on issues of concern. So not trying to add the burden to the environmental document, what is it that we can do? So Director Capurso is trying to get clarity on what's a mandatory request versus take a look at request.
The one, the one mandatory is about the bicycles and the showers. It cites our own sections in our general plan. Todd is addressing the ADA. He's very aware of that. He's addressed the trees. Tenting the house is probably a construction item. Archaeologists were were seeing some discussion that it would be good to have archaeologists archaeologists on site, whether that affects the IR or not.
So I would like to suggest that I don't know if we need a motion or not, but staff may be better supported if there is. The bike and shower issue is needs to be addressed. The stop sign and the crosswalks needs to be clarified. The archaeologists need, I'm not aware that you have an archaeologist the full time. They're put under contract and made available. And I think the document says they stop work until the archaeologist can come. So I think that's standard procedure rather than to pay for an archaeologist full time. So I think I'm okay with that. And Mr. Danielson can clarify if that's correct.
That's correct. The for this site, it wasn't identified as especially sensitive, but there is a possibility of hitting something. And so in this case, the consultant didn't identify the need for monitoring to start. But if something isn't countered, that they need to be brought out to assess it. So the 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 recommendation wasn't to have a monitor from day one as, you know, the native soil is exposed. It's more if you encounter something that looks unusual, then you consult with an archaeologist.
And I think that staff is going to be communicating with the tribe and making them aware of what the the document says and requires and engage them on future projects. But simply not, I'm I'm going to say not needing to comply with the full requirements of the of the regulation because it was, it's not applicable at this point.
Yeah, the city has complied to date. Yes.
The city has complied to date. So I think keeping communications open is always important. And the only other thing I'm hearing, which obviously I have a preference for, is some type of protection for the Ainsley House. Now, whether that means to be tented or not, I don't know. But I do think that public work staff needs to work with the museum staff very thoughtfully to make sure that the bid documents have some protection and monitoring and protection in place for the house and the gardens and everything else that's appropriate to the value of the property. Okay, and staff's agreeing with that.
Yes, understood.
Okay. Councilwoman Landry and last thought. Oh, you have one more point. Yes.
They're bringing a vehicle inside the existing building. And I've been told by the police that won't be running, but there will be fuel probably in the tank of any evidence vehicle. And I didn't see that addressed in the hazmat part.
No, you are correct in that, but you will see it addressed in the design of the of the hate to call it the design of the existing building because it's already been built. But when you see the revisions to the existing space that your next, the next time we bring PD before you on, I want to say September twenty first, you'll see, you'll see in a comment, you'll you'll see the installation of a ventilation system as part of the project. But clearly not called out in the environmental document, but it is part of the project.
Okay, so we have a record of this discussion at this meeting. And staff's commitment to making sure all of this is responded to in the subsequent submittals. So I think that's the direction that I would recommend we go. And with that, if there's a motion, and the motion would be regarding that the city council adopt the resolution for the mitigated negative declaration. Anyone wishing to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration for the Mejero Civic Center Improvement Project number twenty one dash MM.
One second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Landry and a second by Councilmember Bybee. May we have a roll call vote, please? That's Councilmember Bybee.
Bye.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Resonant Office recused, Mayor Gibbons.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for the good work and the documentation. And and I think a valuable discussion that's relevant to the success of the project. So thank you all. Okay. We will now go on to the next segment of our meeting, new business. This is a very special conversation this evening before council. It is to adopt a suicide prevention policy. It is the recommended action that the city council adopt a resolution approving addition of a suicide prevention policy to the council policy manual. We will have a special presentation begun by City Manager Brian Loventhal. And it will be followed by speakers from suicide prevention advocate Dick O'Jackian. And Mr. O'Jackian was also a former Palo Alto mayor. So welcome. And Brian, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the introduction. This is a significant issue. Every day we see lives lost to suicide, those that are close to us or close to those that we know. And I remind you of this, as we saw a KCBS report today regarding the tragic incident at VTA with a with a suicide that was most tragic. And and it just reminds us that that's with us every day. This process started back in two thousand and ten, the Santa Clara County, addressing an increase in rise in suicides in our county. And the county developed a plan to to strategically deal with suicide prevention. The staff report highlights the five strategies that were contained in that county plan. And since that time, about half of the Santa Clara County cities have adopted a policy that endorses the county's plan and sets forth specific actions that the cities would take. And more recently, Mr. O'Jackian approached us through contacts with Councilmember Lopez and through Supervisor Ellenberg's office to reach out to see if there was room for consideration of adding Campbell to that list of cities that that has a robust suicide prevention strategy. And for the reasons stated in the staff report, I think it makes a lot of sense and and staff has embraced it. And it's before you tonight because I I think it makes sense for our community. And it's important and, you know, some of the questions you would anticipate is why now? And 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 why not before? And I can't speak to why the city didn't take this action before. But it makes sense. The city does have an administrative wellness policy that if the council were to adopt this, that administrative policy will be updated to reflect this. And then also, I I would be remiss if I didn't mention the work of our commissions in this area over the last couple of years. I know the CIC Commission and the Youth Commission have both tried to address this in different ways. More recently, our education subcommittee that comprises of Councilwoman Landry and Councilmember Lopez were meeting to find ways to leverage some of the things that we're doing in the city with the with the school districts and and the education facilities in our jurisdiction. And suicide prevention was one of those things that was identified. So it seemed like this strategy made sense. Certainly, we we in luckily haven't had any employee issues with suicide recently or in city facilities, but we take that seriously. And this plan addresses both what we would do and reach out to city employees and provide resources. We do have a robust employee assistance program in the city. This would supplement those services. And I don't think it's a heavy lift to utilize our existing processes for onboarding and providing employees, those assistant programs that we could take the information through the county resources and leverage that very easily. And this plan calls for us to do that. And then it talks about city facilities and using our safety and risk management committee to look at how we would deal with suicides in our facility and respond to those, how we prepare for that in our plan. And then last and probably as significant is is how do we reach out to city residents? And the staff report doesn't mention the work of the commissions, but I had prepared a desk item that you received. I can share the screen, but under the city resident section of the policy, we've added some language that speaks to working with the CIC Commission, the Youth Commission and the Education Committee, at least in educating our city residents in this area. So with that, I can certainly answer questions, but I I'm in full support of it. And I I can tell you, I don't think there's a tremendous burden on our staff time to implement these policies. I think we have procedures in place that 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 make this easy to implement and utilizing county resources, develop the content and really make a difference and and do the appropriate outreach to to our employees, our commissioners and our residents. So with that, I'm available to answer questions. I know Mr. O'Jackian is is here with us this evening. And if that's appropriate, I I turn the floor to him to speak in support of this item.
Please, Mr. O'Jackian.
Thank you. And thank you for those comments, Mr. City Manager. Because part of what we try to do when we do this type of work is have the people who are going to do the work own the work. And I'm very encouraged by the remarks that you made. So I'm Vic O'Jackian. Like Mary, you've already sort of described me, but I'll do it quickly. I co-chair the county's suicide prevention effort have since its inception. I chaired the committee that wrote the plan. I'm also the co-president of NAMI Santa Clara County in or the NAMI unit chapter in this county and have been for a while now. And as you said, it was interesting listening to your discussions earlier. I served six years as a Palo Alto Planning Commissioner and eight years as Palo Alto City Council Member, and I'm a former mayor of Palo Alto. And I wasn't going to do this, but I think I'll interject this now. When I served in office, one of my children killed himself. So it has a lot to do with the work that I do. It's what motivates me at one level, but I will let you know that at another level, having lived in Palo Alto for thirty years, one of the shocks that I had was all the people who called me. All the, all the people who I'd known, excuse me, all the people I'd known for some twenty and thirty years who decided to share what their personal situation was. So I don't want anybody to kid themselves. Suicide isn't exclusive to any one group of people or set of individuals. And I've interacted with people in the city Campbell in the past who've lost loved ones to suicide. So just quickly too, for the people who are listening tonight, because there might be some people who have had their lives affected. I send my regrets. I will remind you, it's not in your policy and it doesn't necessarily have to be. We have a crisis line number. The national number that you put into your policy will route those calls back to this number. So if you call the national number, they'll get back to the folks who are manning these phones. But this number, one eight five five two seven eight four two zero four is the local number that you can call that have the people who will talk with you about your issues. Also, we enacted a couple of years ago, the crisis text line. Some of you maybe have heard of this and say to yourself, well, yeah, we've heard of that. And it has a prefix and then the number seven four one seven four one. This county has a special contract with the folks who run the crisis text line. So we use the prefix renew and that will get that will direct you to Santa Clara County folks. And also it captures the data from a call that's made or a text that's made to this number. So just so you know that. Why do your comments, City Manager, we're gradually getting around to the cities. We didn't use, we didn't decide if this would be a major project because we have a number of major projects that are happening that are run by the county staff. So we're just gradually going through the cities. But I will tell you this, we have seven cities. If this is approved tonight, it'll be eight of the fifteen. We have two other cities currently considering a policy. One will probably be heard next month in September and the other one somewhere shortly thereafter. And we're going to make an effort now to get all the cities. There's some different reasons for doing that. And then why do that? We think one of the barriers to that people have to get past when they're dealing with suicidal ideation and intention is stigma and stigma. There's certain ways you can overcome that. And one of the ways is through awareness. And by awareness, I mean doing things like training and presentations and disseminating information. So a city has a key role in being a participant. It's what we call an all hands on deck approach to to trying to prevent people from taking their lives and and directing them to other alternatives. So the one other comment I'll make is, I don't know if I should do this. I've done forty of these local policies, if you count school districts. They've all been approved. They've all been voted on unanimously. And in the process, I think some of the people in elected office I think some of the people in elected office, it provided them an opportunity to talk about their personal situations. And I'm grateful to you, Mayor, for bringing this forward and to the two council members who worked on the policy. Kudos to all of you. So thank you. And if you have any questions or things you want to ask of me or people in the program, we have several people watching this hearing. And we have a couple who are attending them. I want to say a few words. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Jackian. Difficult, difficult conversation. Difficult conversation to listen to and to feel. I will just say that all of us here on the council know of two of our commissioners who have both lost spouses through suicide. So it is near and dear to our family of Campbell. Also, I have my friend, Marie Milo, who works on the NAMI board with you. So yeah, so thank you. Any questions for the City Manager or Mr. O'Jackian? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing and Madam City Clerk, do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
I don't have anybody signed up, but I would just like to remind those who are listening, there's a few people listening, they can use the raise hand function on their screen and that'll let us know that they'd like to speak. Yes. So we have somebody who would like to speak from the public, Dr. Joshi.
Yes, welcome, Dr. Joshi.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Shashank Joshi. I am a professor of psychiatry, pediatrics and education at Stanford. A community member in Palo Alto. I am a dad and I'm a Little League coach. And something that's become really apparent to me in this work, which I started with Vic and his wife Mary and a number of others after we experienced our cluster in two thousand and nine, ten is a lot of the everyday doses of well-being and connection and contact and touch points with each other as peers in school settings with our youth and their trusted adults, as well as us as parents and community members was lost. It was something we really took for granted in the last twenty months. And so my hope is we are going to have more opportunity now for these moment to moment points of connection. And what I've learned in Palo Alto through the work of Project Safety Net, this is village work. As Vic said, this would be the eighth city that adopts the policy. Of the fifty-eight counties, Santa Clara really has taken the lead throughout California around enacting policies like this, not only for youth, but throughout the lifespan. There's been a lot of attention on the things that we've done. And we've had to pay attention as people doing this work about mistakes and and gaining experience. And one of the things we do is we come to conversations like this, we come to city council meetings and school board meetings to share our experience. So I'm here just to commend you for bringing this suicide prevention policy to light and to consider this. And as you've heard from Mr. O'Jackian, there really is quite a bit of leverage you all have as leaders in the community of Campbell to send a message that suicide prevention, well-being promotion, as we emerge out of COVID nineteen first phase, it all goes hand in hand. You have a wonderful opportunity right now to make an important statement to build on the work that the county has started and that many members of your community in Campbell have been part of. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Any other speakers? No, Madam Mayor, that was the last hand raised. All right, thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing and bring the discussion back to council for comment and or a motion. Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to our city staff for really getting behind this and investing in this and making the most of this opportunity we have before us and Mr. O'Jackian for all of your work and bringing this and also to the Office of Supervisor Allenberg for also really being a champion who reached out and shared some statistics that and unfortunately, although they're small proportionate to our size, the these numbers are higher in Campbell and rising in recent years. And so this is something that that's very timely in addition to everything else that that's been said. And my heart goes out to Mr. O'Jackian and I too have had loved ones lost to suicide or who have made attempts. And so certainly, I, you know, understand at least a measure of that pain. And I'm really proud of our city for getting behind this. But I'll also add in addition to everything else that's been said is that values and perception matters, especially when someone is you know, feeling or feeling that they have no hope or no way out. That perception of us as an inclusive community really matters and can make a difference and could hopefully be the difference for someone. So I'm glad that we're standing up and saying these are our values and that we're going to do our part in this. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bybee.
Well, I just wanted to say that I very much support the policy and appreciate the staff work that went into crafting the policy and the council members have helped assisted with that. I also want to thank Viv for acknowledging the inclusion of the advisory commissions in the policy. I think it's important. I know that they, a couple of the commissions have expressed their desire to want to do more in the area of mental health and suicide. So I think this lends itself to that, to that that goal. And I would also recommend that we include this policy on our website with the links to these various resources that people have. I think it's a matter of public awareness and there isn't a lot of public awareness about in my view, mental health as well as suicide. And sometimes you have to really dig to find, to find the resources that you need and having it available on a website would help, could help someone who was desperate and needed, you know, immediate action. So I applaud the efforts of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the hard work. I know when this was first discussed with me, we got with Susan Ellenberg's office and with Sergio, we saw it as our education subcommittee as a topic to be addressed because a lot of this is education. And so I want to thank everybody. Thank you to our speaker tonight and to staff. And I do support adding this to our website. And maybe even occasionally having births on our Facebook page, Instagram. I'm not into social media, but whatever we do to have periodic updates about this because not everybody knows, oh, go to city website and look this up. So last that we can do periodically, I think would help. And so I want to thank Evan Lo and Susan Ellenberg for writing letters of support that we received today.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Yeah, I'll just echo what everybody said and I'm going to agree with that and obviously will support this. And I, it is a good point that we get on the website and that we promote the awareness, the awareness of this in every, every mechanism we can, whether the website, social media, whatever. But I think it's a, it's a good step forward and and I want to thank everybody, not just from the public and supporters and staff, but also the committee members that brought this forward and all that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
I'd just like to add, I'm in support of the great ideas that have come forth. I'd also like to suggest adding that that text hotline, which I don't see in the policy itself, and I think would be a great resource. It sounds like the phone hotline will, you know, is represented here under the national one, but I think to add that great new resource that we have would be helpful as well.
Thank you. And I was going to suggest adding the local one in addition to the national one, just to make sure they've got as much resources and as available as quickly and readily as possible. So very, very I don't know, salient, difficult conversation. COVID and the mental health of everyone and our young people and our seniors are really suffering. So I thank everyone involved, Supervisor Ellenberg, for bringing this forward to our attention. I was not aware of this opportunity. So I thank you all for all that hard work and commitment. It's extremely important that our city be proactive. And I thank all those who brought it forward and the work it took to get us here. With that, may I have a motion, please?
No one else, you guys? Okay. I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution approving the addition of the suicide prevention policy to the council policy man.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second motion by Councilwoman Landry, and I think there was a second by Councilmember Lopez. May we have a real call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov.
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. And we will now move on to the next item of new business, which is item number ten. Authorize staff to proceed with standard design bid build delivery methodology for the police operations building. This is a recommended action that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to proceed with the construction of the proposed police operations building using the standard design bid build project delivery method in order to retain a higher level of design control through the preparation of design documents.
And Mayor, I will recuse at this point for reasons I think are proximity of my house to the, to the project itself.
Thank you for reminding us for doing that. Thank you. Okay, and we have a presenter and I don't know if it's going to be Mr. Borden or Ms. Director Capurso.
A sigh. I will just chime in here real quick and let you all know that it will be Tim Borden from Management Partners here making the presentation this evening. So with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Borden.
Thank you, Todd. So yeah, good evening, Mayor, City Council, Tim Borden, Special Advisor with Management Partners. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay, so if you go back to a little bit of background, if we go back to May of two thousand and twenty, that is when the city council awarded the building design services contract for the new police operations building under measure O to LPA Inc. for a contract amount not to exceed nine hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So what was included in that scope was LPA to do the building programming, the conceptual design, the schematic design, and then the design development drawings. And that's about where we are. We were anticipating that we'll be bringing forward the design development drawings for the building at the September twenty first, twenty twenty one council meeting. And so that, that concludes the current work in, in LPA's contract. However, there is the allowance for additional services and it was contemplated that at this point, just prior to the approval of the design development plans, that the city council would make a decision as to whether to move forward with a design bid build, a project delivery or approach, or a design build project delivery approach. And so tonight I want to talk through what, what those are. I know that, you know, there's a couple of council members that are very aware of this, just given their background, but I'm going to go back and talk about what, what is included, what's not included in both of those design delivery, project delivery services. And then also some, some pros and cons, advantages and disadvantages to, to both of those. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and this is, so this, again, this is what we're going to be talking about. We're going to talk about the traditional design bid build. We call it traditional because that's what Campbell's used exclusively to deliver projects in the past. And it's really what has been the predominant method of project delivery throughout the country until two thousand and still is, but in two thousand and six in, in California, there was the
Tim, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. If you are trying to show slides, we're not seeing anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am. So let me see why that's not working. Thank you for letting me know that before I continue to ramble on.
Madam Mayor, Tim, I do have the slides available if you'd like for me to present.
Uh, yeah, that would be great, Cecil. Thank you. Okay. So yeah, if we can go to the next slide, then Cecil. Okay, great. So yeah, this is where I was talking to here. So we will be talking about traditional design bid build, which has been nationwide, really has been the predominant project delivery method for, for many years until two thousand and six and when in California, design build was legislated, included in the public contract code as an acceptable project delivery method. And we'll talk more about the differences again in those two. We'll talk about the advantages and the disadvantages of each, next steps with each method because they are, they do both require different next steps, especially when it comes to the LPA contract. So, so you'll, what we'll talk about is one fork in the road is if we go design bid build, then, then they, LPA would, we would negotiate a contract amendment that would allow them to move forward with construction drawings and specifications. Design build, we would basically take, take and re-negotiate a contract amendment with LPA to do what we call bridging documents. And we'll talk about what those are, but those really are setting performance guidelines forward so that a design build contractor can come in and, and finish the design and then move into construction. So then we'll talk about staff recommendation and then any questions. Okay, next slide. Okay, so really I want to point out that really the, the goal here is there are pros and cons to both of these methods. However, what the goal is really to provide the, the best value, the best project to, to the city, to the community for, for the, you know, the taxpayer dollars. So that's, that's really the goal here. And this is why it is an important decision for the city council to make. Design bid build, again, this is the traditional method, has been used exclusively in, in Campbell. It is where you have two contracts, your architect, which would be continuing with, with LPA in this, in this instance. And then we go and, and they actually finish the design. They finish a sixty-five percent design set, a ninety percent design set, and then a hundred percent design set. And then they put together a, a bid package, which includes the final construction set and a, and specifications. And then it goes out, it goes out to bid for a construction contractor. In this method, the city manages the scope alignment. And what that means is that the city will be planning, making sure that those different stages of, of plan phase, sixty-five, ninety, a hundred percent aligned to the performance goals that the city set forward. Make sure that it carries out, you know, the needs of the police department, the community and what we've, we've heard from the city council. So that is the city's scope through the remainder of the, of the design process. It is again, the traditional method and in what most public agencies, most architectural firms are accustomed to, although that is that is transitioning some. It is a linear sequence of work and that in that what we're talking about is there are continued decision points through the design process. It's linear and that, you know, so there's decision points on whether to proceed after 65% or if there are are changes necessary on 95, 100%. And then, you know, up all the way up until the bid package and and you go out to bid, there there are decision points. And 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 then and then that moves forward. Again, under this, this scenario, the risk and onus is on the owner or the city to carry contingency for unforeseen conditions. So if anything should should be found during construction, you know, unforeseen utilities, soil conditions, things like that. The contractor, the a change order is negotiated and the contractor is paid for those unforeseen conditions. Okay, go ahead. Again, so design build characteristics. So this is a single point of contact responsibility and and really what that is getting at is once these bridging documents, and I'm going to go back to that in a minute. Once those are turned over and you contract with a design build entity, now that's, and I'm going to be using that term, the design build entity, that's that is is one firm that is is going to be completing the design and then also doing the construction. So there's a single, single point through that entire process, once they are, once they are awarded the contract. There in this, the general contractor manages the scope alignment. So I'll talk about now, I'll talk about what bridging documents are. Bridging documents are that what LPA would be working with us to to put together at this, at this point, if if this method is is decided upon. And it really is setting the, you know, it it's all of the performance requirements of the project. So it's the the type of building, the size of building, the materials that we've talked about up to this 30%, the design development phase. It's it's taking all of those and ensuring that that the the package that goes out to bid for the design build entity, that that those people are, those firms are going to be bidding on those performance requirements that were set set forth under the design development drawings. So that's, that is really what becomes the the bid documents for the design build entities is these bridging documents. They're under this scenario, there is the potential to accelerate the delivery of of projects. Now, this is, this is in general, but what where you where you get that benefit is your design build entity does not put together that final bidable set of drawings, because they, you know, they they are already going to be just turning it over to their their general contractor that that is their partner. So there that that step is really eliminated. There is not a bid package or or specifications that are that are put together. There is also the ability to accelerate delivery because your contractor has been working with your designer up through that 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 final, that final phase. So anything, you know, that that may have been a a problem. If those two entities weren't talking, your designer and your contractor, they may be able to be worked out during that that phase and then again, accelerate, facilitate delivery. The risk and onus is on the contractor to carry a contingency for unforeseen conditions in this, in this instance. So this is, this is not all unforeseen conditions, because there are still some responsibilities that the city could anticipate there. So there would still need to be some contingency carried by the city, but most of it is under a design build method, the the risk is is really passed from the city to the design build entity at a at a at a price. There there, that's, that's what the the benefit here is, is that that you're going to get a more guaranteed price at the and pass on that risk and you're going to be paying that that design build entity to take that risk. So that's really what that is about. And then just as far as unforeseen conditions. So some of you may know that the city Cupertino currently is using a design build method for their library expansion. And while there are certainly minimal minimal change orders under a design build method, there are things like there was a a conduit that was unknown, was not included in the bridging documents. And so when that was found, it was, you know, $150,000 to the city to 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 pay for. So it doesn't get the city out of all unforeseen conditions, but it does really eliminate the amount of change orders typically. Okay, next. Okay, so now just to to go through some of the advantages to Eve, I've hit on them a little bit, but let me go ahead and talk about those. Full control of design and budget. This is in the design bid bid build method. So again, this is because we're going through and 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 continuing to review, this is both staff and and potentially also city council at 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 continued stages of the design. So it could be at the 65%. Certainly, the staff will be reviewing the 65%, the 95% and the 100% drawings. So there are decision points and and also input that can go into the project that all the way up to the bidding of the construction. Procurement laws are well defined. So again, this has just been the, the public contract code has been developed and added to and and improved over many, many years, because this is the predominant project delivery method. There is lower initial costs. So what that what that means is this, this method is always going to be your your lowest responsible bid. So you're you're putting that that bid pack package out, and then you're going to be awarding that construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder. So you're going to have a low starting point there. And where I'm just so that you know what I'm going to talk about, the differences in design build does not necessarily have to go to the lowest responsible bidders. I'll I'll talk more about that. And then enhance transparency based based on owner held contracts. So again, when you, when, once you under design build, you're going to be turning the 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 final design over to this design build entity and in until construction begins. So there's less, there, there's a little bit more of a black box on that final design. Yes, they have to adhere to all the performance standards set out in the bridging documents, but but there isn't the, you know, the weekly following of each each part of the design that the city can or the city council can participate in. Under design build, some of the advantages is the contractor has input into the design process. So this, this is is as obvious as as it is. This is, this is very true. The contractor can can interject things that that will be, could be of savings, like be value engineering ideas, some innovation that they could bring in, certainly constructability. So having having the contractor involved in the final design of the project can be very helpful. There are overlaps and gaps and scopes that are identified during pre-construction. So again, having that contractor and the designer working together, there's less, less possibility that there are those that overlaps and gaps between design and construction or constructability. The package allows for early construction start. So as I said, that there is, there is not a formal bid package that is put together. So the the design build entity could say that that they could have their demolition work begin on the on the project site before they even start finishing, before they complete the actual design of the building. So that's just some of the advantages again on on the acceleration. Tighter control to adhere to scope and and budget. So that's really built in, because there isn't really additional opportunities for increasing or or changing the scope or the budget. You've tied that down at the bridging document stage. What you're also doing there is while while you are getting a more or less a guaranteed price, you are locking in prices earlier. So so if if you see the markets as construction markets as as moving up, then it's good to lock them in earlier under design build. If you see that that things may be softening, then having that flexibility all the way up to the end in design bid build, you may then understand that there are some add alternates that you may be able to add back into the project because of the market going, you know, getting softer. So that that's really just a you know, a judgment call on on the, on behalf of the council to determine, you know, whether they're locking in a price or letting it float is is better. And then the potential to increase in qualified general contractor participation. So you may get more interest from larger contractors that are that are experienced in design build relationships that would be attracted to this project under a design build release. Okay, so the next one. I'll talk about some of some of the challenges. So under design bid build, the potential for increase in in change orders is is possible, but again, because it is the relationship with the the owner and the contractor at that at that point. So when the, whenever there's, there's either changes in condition or are changes in in what the owner wants in the project that happens during construction, the the owner is responsible for those change orders. There, there is no contractor input during the final design in design bid build. It's longest duration. So again, this, this can be, it it can be longest duration. I I would just note here that under design build, some of the, it it can be shorter. However, there is some legislative things that need to be in place to authorize design build, especially for the first time a city uses that that method. So whether the it it would be a longer duration for design bid build or not is it's tough to say at this point. And in the the onus is on the owner to pre-qualify bidders. So so it it would be advisable for a project of this size and importance that you do pre-qualify bidders, you do an RFQ to make sure that you, that anyone that bids on the project and gives you that lowest bid is able, has 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 built those types of projects in the past, similar projects, and is capable of delivering a good project for the city. Under design build, the owner is pushed for early decisions. So it's, it's, it's really just that that decisions need to be made on scope prior to completion of the bridging documents. Because after that, that's when the design bid build entity will will get the project and and take over and make sure that the design conforms to the bridging documents, but the decisions will really stop at the point of that the bridging documents are complete. Limit limits the owner's control of design and for that very reason, it is just that the final design is really just conforming to what we're really near right now. So if if the design development drawings are completed in and approved in September, we would be immediately going into bridging documents. So would would really be closing down the the input into that design in roughly the October, November timeframe. There's higher initial cost. And and again, this is because you are paying for the risk that and the benefit of the contractor taking that risk. There's the potential for the lack of continuity due to, you know, change in 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 the design build entity team. There's an increased risk of the general contractor contesting the bid, and that that's again, goes to design build is, it can be that the award can go to the best value or the most qualified contractor does not, it's not black and white, such that it goes to the lowest responsible bidder. So there can be more, you know, more possibility for contesting that that award. An increase in general contractors documentation, coordination and agency submittal efforts, and then less team transparency based on the contractual arrangements with the general contractor. So we don't really know the the contractual agreements between those two entities. It's, it's, it may not be important to the city, but there really is no knowledge of of how how they are working internally. Okay, next page. The next steps under design bid build would be first and negotiate and execute an amendment to the LPA agreement to incorporate scope to complete the 65, 95, and 100% review sets and metals, provide bid and contract award support, contract, construction management so support, and then provide administration support. In in their initial response and and their their agreement, they did estimate what this would be, should the design go to the method go to design bid build, and that was going to be $1.3 million. Again, this is subject to negotiation, but that was the estimate back in May of 2020. $1.3 million to complete this work. I just note that that the the city under both scenarios, design bid build and design build would would likely need to have either an an internal or a construction management firm to to manage and stay on top of of either effort. Let's go to the next. Next slide. Okay, and then next steps under design build would be to negotiate and execute the amendment with LPA to incorporate the preparation of bridging documents, support city staff to pre-qualify the design build entities and solicit bids for the for the design build entity. And and this is required out of the public contract code, include an enforceable commitment to use a skilled and trained workforce. So there is a labor clause in the public contract code for using the design build. And then also design build contract administration support. Then the the city council would also need to adopt a resolution approving the use of divide, design build delivery and establishing a contract, a conflict of interest limitation. So that again, that is a requirement of the public contract code. So that is the the legislative or administrative steps that would be necessary under design build just to to get the city so that they have the authority to move forward with that approach. Next. So our our recommendation, Management Partners and and staff is to proceed with the construction of the police operations building using design, design bid build delivery method. And that's really about retaining the high level of design control right up to the end. And this was, this was our recommendation based on the city council's deep interest in the success of both the library and the police operations building. So understanding that that up till now, there's been a lot of input from city council, very helpful input and guidance on on how to move the the project forward. So the recommendation really is around continuing that ability all the way up to the the bidding of the construction documents. So the again, this is recognizing there are a lot of benefits to design build. Again, Cupertino just used that and it's it's going fairly well with their library expansion. So it is a very definitely a a possible decision that could be successful. But right now with given the the pros and cons, this was our recommendation. Next slide. And that brings us to questions.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, lots to digest there. Thank you for putting those slides together. We may want to refer back to them. Are there questions from the council at this time? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Tim. You mentioned that with the design build procedure, there is less ability for transparency. Can we, if council were to go that route, could we still ensure that all city guidelines are followed for subcontractors?
Yes, so within the bridging documents and the requirements, I mean, we can absolutely make sure that all subcontractor protections that are in place in the municipal code would be incorporated into that document.
So when you say less transparency, do you just mean kind of the day-to-day workings of the relationship?
Right, right. Just that we don't know the working relationships between the contractor and the designer. And we're not going to be seeing that 65%, 95%, 100% drawings for approval. So that's all I mean by less transparency. I don't think there'll be anything hidden. We'll get updates. Well, it's not like the building will start rising out of the ground without anyone knowing. However, there won't be as much information and feedback that happens in that last part of the design.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Bybee and then Councilwoman Landry.
And one of the things I didn't quite understand, you made a comment about that we would need a construction management firm to manage.
Or an internal construction manager. So it's important under each delivery method, and their scope would be a little bit different, but still very important. So with under design bid build, your construction management firm is there managing the overall construction, but also is also the coordinator between the designer, in this case, it would be LPA, and the contractor. So when the contractor has questions on the drawings or there's decisions, design decisions that need to be made to keep construction going, the construction manager really is at that point where they are coordinating those discussions. If change orders are needed, that construction manager would be working on that. Under design build, it's still important that they're out there, but what they will be doing more so is ensuring compliance and conformance with the bridging documents. So the performance requirements, everything that was set forward in the bridging documents, the construction manager on a day-to-day is going to be making sure that that is conformed to. So Cupertino, they have, in their library expansion, they've gone with design build, but they have hired a construction management firm where they have a construction manager fully dedicated to the project. And then they also have a project manager that is part-time dedicated to the project. So that's even under the design build formula.
So is the oversight by the project manager greater in the design build process as it would be as opposed to the design?
I would say that the construction manager is probably, their scope is larger in traditional design bid build because they are bridging that communication between the designer and the contractor, the general contractor. So I would say that their role is more critical, but not to the point under design build that it disappears. It's really, it's still critical day-to-day.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Landry.
I'm off mute, right? Okay.
You're off mute.
We mentioned earlier about having an oversight board, and you said there'd be less transparency. How does that interact with an oversight board for the bond?
So I would, those terms, the less transparency is in general. But if there's an oversight board, you can still bring back updates. It's not that, it's just that the oversight board under design build, after the bridging documents are completed, there wouldn't be a real effective vehicle for feedback other than whether the project is conforming to the performance guidelines in the bridging documents. So they would still be able to be informed of project status, but they would just have less ability to have feedback under design build.
And when you mentioned about all the contract codes would be followed under design build, I get confused. I like low bid, design build, makes it easier for me. So under low bid, you have to pay either union or prevailing wage. Under design build, do you still have to pay prevailing wage?
I believe it is prevailing wage. You're basically, as they call it, there is a, I'm sorry, I want to be exact with the term, but it's an enforceable commitment to use a skilled and trained workforce. So, you know, the details of that, I'm not certain offhand right now. But I think that you can make, you can decide in the bridging documents to have them follow prevailing wage as set forth in your municipal code.
So skilled and trained doesn't mean you're paying them as well necessarily.
Right. You can have them, you can decide to have, put that into the performance requirements that the design build entity has to pay prevailing wage.
Okay, and then if they do that, would we still have the ability to do checking that? Because I know in low bid, they have to submit information saying that they're paying those. Would that be the same under design build?
Yes, yes. Your contract compliance and checking to make sure that appropriate wages are being paid would still apply.
Okay, and then, what was my other question here? So in both methods, we would have a city project manager, whether they're full-time or part-time. We would also have a construction management under both scenarios.
I'm saying that would be my suggestion, and that would be typical, that would be, that would be the best guidance there is is to have both a project manager and construction manager, either internal or contracted, to be dedicated to the project.
Okay, and just to make sure I'm clear, the design build, where the contractor and the architect are working together, they would give us a price upfront, so we would know the price sooner. And it potentially would take longer to get to there. Because you were saying low bid could happen sooner.
No, no, I, low bid would, no, I don't think that that would necessarily happen sooner. I mean, you could, you would be able to go out to bid for your design build entity as soon as your bridging documents are complete. And then it would be the awarding that would be based on best value. So I'm glad you asked the question. So let me explain a little bit more what best value is. So it could be, price could be one factor. But also best value really means that you have, the city has the ability to negotiate that price with the design build entity. So you could also include, you know, whether the qualifications and how good the contractor is, their reputation. You can base it on a lot of things. But then you can also, for example, you can say, well, what if we were, we would never do this in this case, but what if we were to allow night work? What would you be able to reduce the price for? So, I mean, there is some give and take in negotiation to determine what that best value number ultimately is.
Okay, and then the onus on the design build would be all our ducks need to be in line quicker, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, it's basically pencils down for the most part once the bridging documents are complete. Because then it goes off to the design build entity, and they just need to conform to everything that we've told them they need to conform to.
So decisions need to be made sooner than in a low bid?
Yes.
I think that's all my questions.
Okay, I'm dying to ask my questions, but the city manager head is hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify one thing I heard in the question from Councilwoman Landry with regard to the oversight board and transparency. I don't know if this was the impression, but I just wanted to be clear that there shouldn't be any distinguishment with transparency with the oversight board with either of these two methods. The board, oversight board isn't going to be charged with providing any direction or input on design or construction. They'll simply be reviewing expenditures after they've been audited after the fact. So I don't think that that would change depending on the model. So when we speak about transparency, it's certainly not referring to what would be reported to the oversight board. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. So I put some notes together early on, and your presentation picked up on some of them, and I'm going to try and be cohesive with my questions. So I appreciate the definitions of design bid build and design build that you brought forward. I would offer that the criteria for selection is a little, I'm going to say a little, it's a little simpler in some ways than all of the advantages and disadvantages that you've listed. What I think in terms of what the city needs, it's a question of design control, on time, on budget, and staffing. I'm oversimplifying, but those seem to be the crooks of what the city and the council really need to understand with the background you've provided tonight. So I was surprised with what you were talking about, about construction management companies and construction management. And it feeds directly into my question, which is the famous one. What's the big picture? What is the budget and the schedule for the project as a whole? A whole civic center project, library, and the PD building? Because we need to understand whether this construction management company and/or staffing, however we define staffing, whether it's in-house construction management or whatever your options you presented are. Are we talking just about the police building? And how does that impact the management of the library building? So I know we're talking about design build for the police building, but I just don't want us to lose track of the fact that there's another project. So right now, and the information that you've provided doesn't identify the, and I'm going to simplify it for myself. I don't want to do this, but I think it's necessary for the conversation if we're talking just about the PD building. We do not have a full comparison of the schedule for a design bid build versus a design build. Traditionally, a design build would come in in a less time. You defined it correctly that there's, excuse me, sometimes a cost premium because the contractor is bidding with what they call incomplete drawings, and they make assumptions. And then they have to know that they're going to make the project successful within that money. So there is a risk of paying a premium, but there are advantages as well, notably time. And it's hard to ask council to make a decision without the understanding of what the end date is. You know, we can go this, because again, criteria is staffing, on budget, on schedule, and whatever else I just said, big picture. And then you also were talking about design build, and a lot of your observations are consistent with starting as a design build project. And that is when the owner has the least amount of control. But when you use bridging documents, one of the things that has been so important in your presentation and in the staff report is this control of design. You use design as a key word all the way along. So I'm trying to define what design work is done after the bridging documents. So the bridging documents, it makes perfect sense to say that the city's decision-making stops at the bridging document, and the contractor picks up. But what is it that, the design that the contractor actually picks up on? If the bridging document has a full list of specifications and a full site plan, a full design, full program, full elevations, you know, all of that is the complement of what a bridging document provides, then what is the design that's left for the contractor to take control over? So for example, if the police building has a masonry wall around the perimeter, and it meets certain ballistic protection issues and other things, a contractor could come in and say, I can build it with poured-in-place tilt-up concrete as opposed to the block wall. And I can know I can save $100,000 if I build it with a tilt-up wall. So that's a design change that the contractor, the design build contractor would be involved in. And the question is, is that critical to the city's sense of control of design? I'm not sure it is. So that's the kind of trade-off that we're talking about. So what do we really mean by, the rationale in the report is? This is, I am trying to ask a question here. I am trying to be thoughtful here. I'm trying to make sure I understand your definitions and how you're putting the project together. So what I'm basically saying is the criteria of on time, on budget, design control, and staffing, if you focus just on those, I think you need to better define what the bridging documents actually provide in the way of design decisions that get the needs and expectations of the police department met that aren't, I'm going to say, vulnerable. Does that make sense? Am I reflecting your presentation correctly?
Yeah, I understand your comments. I do.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So your presentation says that the criteria for making this decision is design control. And I'm trying to understand the design control. And then the other factors that you're bringing into it. So I'll try, I think I'm better off just trying to make sure that I'm asking the question about the major criteria. We don't have a full schedule for either option. We don't have in this presentation a full understanding of the staffing. And we don't have a full understanding of the cost of these two approaches. We understand the technical definitions of these, but we don't have the full understanding in this material right now of what Of what the choice is. And that would make sense to you. Okay. All right. So with that, I will. Stop and then. Ask if there are any, open the public hearings, the public comment.
Mayor, if I could just respond very quickly. Just to a couple of the points. So I think that, that your, your point on this building specifically. Because the, the, the police department has been very involved in the design up to this point, then all through the design development drawings. And the city council has, I mean, this is, this, there is probably a very strong bridging package that would put, that could be put together. Where there really wouldn't be too much deviation for final design. But on the other hand, that then you're kind of taking away one of the benefits of design build, which is having that, that value engineering and all the contractor working with the designer. So it's, it's good, it's bad, but, but it's a little bit, where we're at is a little bit different than if you knew from the very beginning, you were going to be do design build.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm getting at. Right, exactly. And I, and I think there's some more flexibility at, at the benefits, but we'll get there. Thank you for that comment. Okay, any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? No matter mayor, nobody's saying that. Okay, we closed the item back down. All right. I, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask. Council members for a comment. Okay, you know I'm going to say something, so be sure and say something if you want. Councilmember Lopez. Have you got your hand raised? You're frozen. There you go.
Yeah, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, but your picture's a little frozen.
Okay, I, sorry about that.
Oh, we lost you.
Um, I'm gonna maybe try turning my video off.
That might help. Thank you.
I've had some trouble today. Tim, this is before my comment, just a quick follow up.
Oh, we lost you again.
I, okay, I'll, I'll keep trying. Oh, I, I think that's interesting. Your last comment that this is a little bit of a different process than if we had started this route, knowing that we were gonna do a design bill. The, the fact that we've had this process, this other process today.
You're cutting in and out, Sergio.
Okay, well, maybe you can come back to me. I'm not quite sure what to do about that.
I would suggest that you call in.
Okay.
And we can use your video, but be sure and turn your audio off so you don't get feedback.
Great. I'll work on dialing in and maybe someone else can comment for now.
Okay. Who else has comments? Councilmember Bybee, do you have your hand up?
I didn't have my hand up, but I'm.
You're unmuted. I'm taking a guess.
I'll be glad to say something. I, I'm leaning towards doing this for, for following the staff recommendation. Based on a couple of the things that I noted, the advantages is that we city has full control of the design and the budget. And it's the predominant. Method that we've used in, in our public bidding process for, for years and the city has really little experience in the design build process. And I, I think this is a significant project to be changing course and trying something different. So right now that's where I'm leaning towards.
So you said control of the budget history and what was your third point?
That the, the city has little experience, none, no experience in the design build process.
Yeah, I thought, I think you had one other point too.
Well, that to change course. You know, to try something different on a project of this magnitude, I just think that we need to. I would rely on the staff recommendation.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Landry?
Sergio's back.
Sergio, are you on a phone? Okay, do you want to try and talk and see if your connection works better?
Sure. My question was just to Tim clarifying. Whether we would potentially, if we were to go down to design build at, at this stage, would we miss out on any of the potential timing or, or cost benefits? Because of the fact that we've had a different process today.
Probably not. I mean, so the timing, there, there are benefits that, that can be captured using design build for sure. And it's again, it's not putting together those final bid documents. It, it is not having to negotiate through many change orders. However, there is, because it would be the city's first time, there is a learning curve and also a legislate, you know, legislative path that needs to be documented. You need to, the council will need to adopt a policy that, that allows in your municipal code that allows design build. And has that conflict of interest code. So, so there is some things that need to be put in place where you lose a little bit of that timing advantage. So it's hard to say how much time. That's why there's not a schedule that's attached to these. Because this being the first one, I, it's hard to say if there would, would be a, a timing advantage or not.
So that ordinance change, I'm guessing would be something that would have to be done at a later point.
Right, would have to come back with, with that for the council to adopt.
Okay, thanks. I can withhold my comments for a minute.
Oh, okay, Councilwoman Landry?
Oh, you have more comments, Sergio? No?
Um, I, I might come back, but.
Can, can you explain the conflict of interest, just so we all understand? I'm, I'm assuming it means the contractor can't go out and have a deal worked out with somebody, or is that not correct?
No, that, that is correct. It's, 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 it is making sure that there is no collusion that occurs between the, the. The designers and the contractors. And so there's prescribed conflict of interest clauses. So Cupertino just adopted one before they moved into design build. But that's really, it's, it's really to make sure that there is no. Conflict of interest or collusion in, in awarding those contracts.
Okay, um, so I'm struggling with the decision. For months now, I've been making comments about. What staffing do we need? We've talked about one project manager that's in the budget. There is no way one project manager is going to be able to handle both the library and the PD building regardless of whichever way we go on this. And so it, whether they're full time or part time, I don't know, but the library needs a project manager, the PD needs a project manager. Will the library have a construction management firm? It, because we're saying either method PD would have a construction management firm.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that that is, that is typical and would, would help the city, protect the city from, you know, to make sure that, that. Construction proceeds timely and per the, per the plans and specifications. Now, if, if Todd or Brian want to jump in on that as well as far as staffing, but, but that, that would be typical that you would have a, a project man, at least a project manager or a construction manager. Dedicated to the measure of projects, whether it needs to be one each, I, you know, I can't, can't really tell you.
And so if we had a project manager, there could be the potential that we would need in-house like administrative assistant. Or a helper for the construction or for the project manager. So there could be more than just one staff member. There could be four or five, couldn't there? Brian?
Yeah, let me, I, I'd speak to this, Tim. Yeah, as, as the council's aware, we are beginning recruitment for a project manager. And they will be managing both projects, but very likely there's going to be support staff that's needed. And you know, some, some factors go into consideration of, of how that is staffed, whether it's internal or external with regard to timing, with regard to expertise. Whether or not we're following the same construction method with both projects will probably impact that as well. Certainly if they're different methods, you probably have different support staff for that. So those could be, for lack of a better term, construction managers, those could be assistant engineers, it could be specialists. For inspections. Or engineers, structural engineers that have specialties. So we, we would bring on additional part-time temp help to support the project manager. And if that couldn't be done, then those would be contracted out with a, for lack of a better term, construction management firm. But likely we'd need support in either case with both projects.
Could the construction management firm be the same for both projects?
Yeah, it, it could be and that gets complicated. The delivery method is different for both projects, but it's not impossible.
No, if they're the same, if they're both low bid, could the same construction management company work on both of them?
Yes.
So there, there's one potential advantage of having one main project manager, one main construction management firm.
Correct.
Okay, um, so staffing is an issue because we, in the budget, we have one. How many more staff do we need? How much does a construction management firm cost? And then when it goes to cost, if we go low bid, it's going to be probably out a year or nine months to a year till we know what this project's going to cost. So we've got escalation going on right now. Our next topic on the agenda is the playground. They were short material, we went out to bid, now we're having to change materials. So those are things. Not knowing where the economy's going, not knowing where building supplies are going. In a low bid situation, we're out nine months to a year to get a sense of the, the cost of this project. So the benefit of the design build is shortly within a couple of months, we will know the price. It may be higher because we don't have to select low bid. But we would know sooner than later the cost of this project. So you can tell I'm, I'm kind of wavering here between which way to go.
So Councilwoman Landry, if I could jump in on the cost, so keep in mind that your cost estimates that you're receiving do project in escalation in their cost. They're bidding this at midpoint of construction or they're estimating cost with what they anticipate midpoint. So you, the cost that you're getting should have some escalation factored into it already, not on top of what they're already estimating. I mean, there may be some additional escalation, escalation, but for the most part, it should be considered as part of your cost estimates today.
Right, but we could get one contractor on low bid who submits a bid. If the economy keeps booming and we've got. Three hundred thousand square foot projects in Santa Clara bidding, we may not get a big diverse pool of low, of bidders on a low bid project. So. Again, I'm trying, I'm trying to weigh the difference here. I'm really on the fence on which way to go. I, that's what I want to hear from everybody. I understand about design control and Gary and I and Brian, we've been talking about this for long before we got a consultant on board. Of the city needs to make clear decisions either way. We, what material, you know, what kind of carpet do you want or? I'm, I'm not into the interior as much, but we need to make design decisions. Either way, in a bid build, we're kind of getting forced to make them now soon. To get the bridging documents to the point where no more design changes are made. So that's a push right now to get that done, where the low bid gives us more months. As we go through sixty-five, ninety-five to help sort out those design elements. And so when it came to the design control, yes, we have more under low bid, but either way, we've got to decide sooner or later which, which could design elements that we want. So cost staffing. And we still don't know, we don't have the cost estimate revised where we're at. I, I'm hearing that we might be on track in that sense. So. In a low bid situation, we're not going to rush to make decisions. In a design build, we would be rushing to make the decisions.
No.
Is that backwards?
No, that's an exact, that, that, that's a, a misstatement, over simplification.
I was trying to be short and concise here. I'm guessing.
I know, I, I, I think you're, 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 you're drawing the wrong conclusion.
Well, to do a set of bridging documents, we need every specification section. We may not have every detail, but we know what elements are to be included and you made the, you made the. Analogy of if it's a block wall or a concrete wall, that's not really a design change. That's more of a structural intake, internal change. So that's what I was saying, under low bid, the decisions for design are still out of ways.
So. If I could, would you mind if I commented?
Yeah, please, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence on this one.
So I, I will make it. Clear that I don't know which is the right way to go. Right now, I don't think we have enough information to make the decision. That's my big challenge. We don't have information about the total implication of the choice. What is the schedule implication? What is the staffing implication? What is the budget risk and what is the design risk? We don't know. There are assumptions which I think are misplaced. That bridging documents, design build. Will lead to a project that isn't what PD wants because it's lost control of the design. And my comment is what design is in fact lost control of? When the bridging documents are. Contain the content that they should, should, which is. The specifications and the performance criteria. So like the. Exterior wall for the ballistics would have a performance criteria for what all the exterior walls of the building needed to do. But you wouldn't. Determine, you'd let the contractor determine how to provide that, but that doesn't change the functionality of the building. That doesn't change the program of the building. It's just finding a way for the contractor to bring in their expertise. At a phase at which they can really. Meet the budget and time parameters of the project. So. When you, it's one thing that I think is important and I don't think was quite clear, Tim, is. The design build entity, I think that was your phrasing. The design build entity is in fact a contractor. Typically with in-house mechanical, electrical, structural and often in-house architects. And the re, and the in-house, and even if they have a, a, an outside architect, it's someone they've worked with. And they know, the architect knows that they need to work with the contractor. To meet the design intent of the bridging documents in a cost effective way. So it's not like a new. I'm, this is where I, I'm saying the design build architect is not a new entity coming in to change the design. The design build architect team is there to work with the contractors to complete the working drawings, to complete the construction documents. So the sixty percent, the ninety percent, they aren't really design documents. They are construction documents. They are really providing the details of how the building is physically built out of what. So you know, if somebody has a, an I-beam for the structure. And the contractor says, you know, my supplier says it's going to take three months to get that section. I can get a tube section in one month. I'm going to change it from an I, I-beam to a tube section. I'm going to change it from an I I-beam to a tube section. So that's not controlling design in this sense, and this is why I'm asking. Where is the perception by PD specifically that they'll lose control over design? Why have you used this phrasing, losing control of, or you you use the phrase, you want to high, to retain a higher level of design control? Well, at what point does design control turn into construction documents? Not design? You understand you understand why I'm asking? What what is it that's at risk? What is the perception of the risk of of losing design control? I I I'm not, I'm not understanding that. So that's one big factor for me to make this decision, but you've identified, we don't have a schedule, we don't know the staffing, we don't know the cost. And Councilmember Bybee said, we have to do something that we have experience with. I I would offer that our design bid build experience is with roads and playgrounds. The last projects that we did were the renovation of the cafeteria and the renovation of the theater. Those were the biggest projects that I'm aware of that the city's done. I I I didn't, as you probably all remember, I'm not, have not, past tense, I have not been in in favor of doing, utilizing construction management companies if it meant duplication of staff and costs. And I'm not sure that question has been answered yet because you're not talking about having design, construction managers for both approaches. Granted, different, slightly different scopes. I totally followed your conversation there. But if we have construction management companies, then the city's experience is much less relevant. They're the ones that are going to take the lead in making these projects happen. Not really our staff. Our staff is going to be there to confirm selection of submittals, confirm pay applications, confirm RFIs, if there are questions like that. Are are the role of our staff is significantly reduced, whether it's in-house or outside. The construction management company has, I'm going to use the phrase, the muscle, has the capability, has the knowledge to manage the projects. And and we don't want to pay for duplication. And we don't need to have the same expertise. So that's the 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 statement that the city hasn't done this before, I I I understand. But if you're going to go to the construction management model, no matter how you define their scope, it changes that debate for me. I just, okay, I I Councilmember Landry, your neck, I would just we need, this council, I I would request that staff come back to council with a very clear plan that says with construction management, with with design bid build, this is the staffing. This is the approach with construction management. This is the scope. This is the cost. This is the schedule to the best ability we understand. And have a parallel track for design build with all of those parameters clearly understood because we don't, we I don't know, I don't know where the money's going to go and who's going to be responsible for what. And then the other side of the coin, which I think is so important, is how does the library fit in? How is the management of that project fitting into these two options? And we have to figure that out, schedule, staffing, budget. So I don't see how we can make a decision without the a comprehensive understanding of what the implications of this choice are. Councilmember, Councilwoman Landry. You're muted.
You didn't hear me swear again, right? I I used the darn word. So I'm hearing what Councilmember Bybee said about, we have experience in low bid projects. But we don't have it to the magnitude of what we're talking about. So we've already committed the library to low bid. I haven't heard yet how that's going to be staffed. Brian said probably a project manager, probably a construction management firm. So yes, we have more experience in low bid, but not to this magnitude. And then to have two projects at the same time seems like a double whammy of the learning curve because of the magnitude that we're talking about. We're talking $40 million here. I forget what our low, last biggest project was. My guess is less than $10 million or 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 less. So I I'm concerned about that we don't have enough information right now, but at the same time, my concern is the schedule. But I don't want to make a rush of decision just because we're so worried about the schedule. And there were numbers thrown around before every month delay is $62,000. But if we go the wrong way, we may spend more money than that. So Brian, maybe you can help me.
You know, and I appreciate the dialogue. This is the dialogue that we need to have. And I think you're honestly hitting the salient points with regard to how the decision should be made and the factors that go into that. And I would say with with all respect, the the conversation I'm hearing tonight leads me even stronger to believe in the staff recommendation. And that's because I I keep hearing we need more information, we need more discussion on this decision. And and I think the the traditional method leads you to more ability to do that throughout the whole process. And I'm not trying to 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 pin anyone down to that, but I just, just, just my feeling in hearing that. You know, there, there's a lot of discussion on the details of this project. And and when we talk about even a wall changing to a poured block wall versus a, you know, a block wall. You know, I I hear in the past, counsel of what's that going to look like? You know, can we see a sample of that? And and that's, that's, you know, and I don't mean to oversimplify, but I but I am just for purposes of discussion, that's ultimately why staffs were making the recommendation.
Yeah, I I I'm sorry, I'll go to Councilmember Bybee, but I think you're misrepresenting my my comments and my examples. That's that's not, that's not a good, good utilization of my examples. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I think you're missing the point. Councilmember Bybee.
So I guess what I'm not following or understanding is the contract management aspect of it in the firm. With either either method, we're going to have to have hire a contract management person.
That that is came out of the presentation from Tim tonight. It's not in the staff report, and it was one of my big questions coming into this. How are we going to staff and manage these projects? And he's now saying that we're going to have to have both staff and construction management with slightly different responsibilities. That's the first time we've heard that. And we don't know how much it's going to cost.
I I'm I'm confused about that. I don't understand. We're going to have a project manager that manages this project, whether it be a a a person that we hire or a contract company, contractor, right?
Two different roles, two, what, Tim, correct us. You defined two different roles. You described a city project manager of whatever capabilities and a construction contract man, construction manager. Right? You were defining two separate roles for each approach.
That's correct. I I would say that, I guess, what the point I was getting at is is under either approach, I would say the the staffing requirements is not going to be appreciably different. The the scope of those roles may be a little bit different because one, you're conforming to bridging documents. One, you're you're being the coordinator between the designer and the contractor, but the there's still that, those roles are necessary and not far different between the two.
And and I would just offer, Councilmember Bybee, I don't mean to interrupt, I would just offer that that's the first time I've heard that. I have always understood that if we went design bid build, we would hire a team of people that would provide the construction management and the project management role as our staff, not in-house staff, but hired specifically for the project. This is the first time I've heard that construction managers would be for both approaches.
I'm waving my hand.
Councilwoman Landry.
So schedule. We're going to come back at the end of September with the documents 35% for PD, which is per the contract. If if we don't make a decision tonight on which way to go, how much of a delay or will there be a delay if some of these questions are answered before we make the decision? So you know, there's the scheduling, the how much is a construction manager cost? How much is a project manager? How many staff do we need? What's the internal implications of the staffing? Can we, is who's here now going to work? How many more do we need to bring in? And can that decision be made the same night that the design development comes forward? Brian?
Yeah, I I can take that question. You know, obviously, will have an impact on time. Because if we wait to make that decision, even if we make it at that meeting or or before that meeting, there's some work to do either with the the amended contract to complete the the construction documents or with an amended contract to do the bridging documents will have to be done and complete and approved by the council prior to the consultant pursuing any additional work. So when we get to that that decision point, they will be at a standstill until we authorize additional work to be done on the project.
So you're having the consultant under the recommended option of design low bid. The contract for the architect would come on the same night that the DD would be coming forward. We would, we would be approving their amendment to the contract to complete CDs.
Or shortly thereafter, yes, that we would do that as quickly as possible, get started on that immediately if we were directed tonight to work on that.
So if we're not directed to work on it tonight, are we a week out of sync, two weeks out of sync?
Well, if you don't make that decision for a month, that's a month out of sync, I would say.
What if you came back the first month, the first meeting in September and tried to help clarify some of this?
I I think we we can certainly try. Honestly, I'm worried about our capacity to be able to turn that around with everything else we're trying to deliver in the next two weeks. I I mean, if that's a desire, the council will do it, but there's certainly a capacity issue with some other key things that we're working on right now. And and I don't want to necessarily get into those, but there there are some other high priority items in the next several weeks here.
So I'll just pop in, Councilmember Lopez, I I am sorry, I'll give you next, I promise. I would just say that I keep coming back to staffing schedule on time, on on budget. And if we are going to hire construction management companies, don't we need a schedule that defines what staff we're going to be going out to hire, at what point, what construction management hiring process is, what the DB process is, or the design bid build process is? What what does that scenario look like? What does, what is a comprehensive understanding of what these two choices mean? And I thought Councilwoman, Councilwoman Landry brought up a very good point earlier, which is that if we go to bridging documents, which can have as much design decision-making in them as we define in that scope, we could have a bit, I'm just picking a number, we could have a a construction company, design bid entity bidding the documents in December, beginning of December, and we'd know, is the project on on budget and can it be built in on time? If we do the design bid build, this, the note said, the budget's our responsibility. And if it comes in nine months from now over budget, and I I will say, I don't have a lot of confidence in the budget estimates of this consultant to date. They've been very dynamic, and there've been challenges to defining the proper scope and the and the design. I think going out eight or nine months is a big risk. If I had all the pieces together and all the costs together, I would be I I I'd be more comfortable making a decision, a more clear decision, whichever way I went. But we just, we don't know. We don't know what the implications of this choice is. Councilmember Lopez.
I I really appreciate the discussion. I think there's been some good, good points raised that have helped clarify as have some of the follow-up questions. I'll try to make this pretty succinct. I don't think we can afford to wait a a whole month settle the 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 question. I I'm in agreement that there is more information that would be helpful to have, but I I'm at this point in favor of taking the design build approach because of the aforementioned confidential cost savings and, you know, the fact that the onus is is not on the council for the budget and the advantages in in terms of time.
Can you clarify, you said design build, right?
Yes, so not the staff recommendation.
Okay. Because it's so confusing. That's why I say low bid, design build.
And I I just honestly think we can't make a a a good decision without more information. I just don't think we have enough information to make a good decision. I was for design, I I just say, historically, I was for design bid build. I mean, frankly, as an architect, I think that's a wonderful way to go. I I do think the vast majority of public projects are now design build. I would not say the majority of projects are designed bid build anymore. I would say their vast majority are designed build. I don't like the idea of going design build, but I think that's a luxury, a design bid build appears to me right now as a luxury we don't have to make sure the project comes in on budget and in a reasonable timeframe.
I would, I'm just so worried where we're going to be in nine months to a year. You can put all the escalation you want in the contract, but if if things are so busy a year from now, that we don't get good bidders. What happens on these low bid jobs when the guys know they're under the gun and they're going to be too busy, they come in high? So what happens? We wait nine months, we go out to bid, we come in too high, you're redesigning. You're spending a couple of months to fix the drawings and then go out to bid again. So over overbid could be another four months delay, so you get a four or five months delay. And that's my fear right now, is that we won't know soon enough how the bidding climate's going to be.
Councilmember Bybee. I'm not meaning to put you on the spot. I'm trying to figure out what we need to move on with this discussion. So what's the best way to move on?
We need to make a decision tonight, I believe, on one method or the other. Either either way, either project, either method, we're still going to have a project, a contract management person and a project manager. So what difference does it make if you know tonight how much that's going to cost or what the staffing is going to be? We know that that's part of this process. So either, with either method. So let's make
Point taken. Yeah, go ahead and finish and then Brian.
Just, you know, it's, you know, you're kicking the can down the road and well, what if this or what if that? Well, you know, that we could have an earthquake tomorrow and the whole thing could blow up, but But you, you, you just have to go on, on faith, you have to listen to the staff recommendation, what they're comfortable with and what they're recommending. And, and I, I, again, this is a, a project well beyond our magnitude that we haven't done, you know, many, many years since we did the Civic Center, you know, plan. So we have to rely on, on, we're going to have to rely on outside project management, I believe, because we don't have in-house experience for this.
So you, your point is a very good one. I hadn't put that into context. Thank you for that. Do you know how, how we stand financially on the projects? Do you have a, do you have a comfort level that where we're going to stand financially and how the library and PD projects are going to be managed concurrently?
Well, there are two separate projects. They're different projects. One's a brand new building and one is a remodel. And we have a budget and we need to, you know, control that. But, but there are some, some factors beyond our control and I've said that all along. You know, of, of the fifty million dollar bond is a lot, is not a sufficient amount of money for, for two buildings. So it, we're probably going to run short of money. And we're going to have to come up with some way to, to address that.
That's my fear. My, my fear is where we are a year from now and getting qualified bidders and then what the bid price comes in a year from now. Brian, can you have any more input?
Tried to help the decision and I know it's, it's a back and forth and there are pros and cons. I, certainly with either model, we're going to try to accelerate the process to avoid escalation. We're going to look at ways to reduce costs. I know LPA has said that they will find ways to, to speed up their process and, and eliminate some escalation in some of those stages. So I think that's going to be our effort no matter what. And I, and I guess my question is really more to the design build process. If we go that route, there, there's, we may get bids on that that exceed what we expect. And, you know, is there some advantage to knowing that now versus down the road? That maybe we do something about it now, but it may be those bids come in higher than we think, even with design build. There's no guarantee they have to bid what we have budgeted. They're going to be bidding what we specked out and, and we may be shocked with those numbers too.
That, that is a correct observation.
Probably didn't make it easier for you with that comment. I apologize if I complicated, but.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you the answer to that question later.
I, I, I just thought I'd mention, maybe that was obvious to everyone, but, but we could, we could run into budget problems with design build just right off the bat with the bits we get to.
The question then is, are we better off knowing now than later?
Yeah, exactly. And, and there may be advantage to know now, so we do something about it.
Okay, then Brian, as a follow-up question to that, we're not committed, if we go out to a, a design build and get prices, we're not committed to those picking somebody. If they come in really high, then we're back redesigning something.
Yeah, that is, that is also correct.
Yeah, that is true.
Okay, so moving the conversation along, we need to make a decision here and take a break. And then we've got more items on the agenda. And I, I, Brian, I wouldn't go to suggest that we postpone item number ten and go to item number eleven. If you would, I mean, sorry, postpone item eleven and go to item twelve, if that works with people. All right, I think what I'm hearing, I'm just trying to try and summarize. I'm hearing one council member saying, I apologize for oversimplifying. One council member saying, follow staff recommendations. I'm hearing another council member say, we don't know enough. I'm hearing another council member saying, go design build. I'm hearing another council member saying, are we better off knowing what our problem is sooner rather than later? Does that kind of cover the table? So how do we get past it?
Well, and so do we, would we know anymore in two weeks or three weeks than we do right now?
I'm inclined to think, I'm inclined to think no.
I, I would ask, what is it that you're looking for?
What, what I am, I am looking for what I always ask, look for, which is I'm looking to understand the big picture. How is the design, how is the police building going to be bid and managed? And how is that going to deliver a project on time and on budget? Meeting the expectations of PD? And I'm, that, that, that's, and you know, and then how it relates to the library. That's what I'm always, I always ask. And I'm, I'm absorbing your comment, which is construction manager. It just, it just kind of caught me by surprise, frankly, that both, both approaches are now proposing construction managers. I, I had not expected that. If you So, so let me try and ask it a different way. One of the things we do in one of my other committees is we talk about risk. Okay, so the risk is that the project isn't what PD wants it to be. The risk is the project isn't, doesn't meet cost and the project takes a longer time to get built. And in-house costs are higher than we want. Those, those are the, the risks. So how do we manage the risk to try and come up with an answer? So Councilmember Bybee feels that staff has made a recommendation and they are willing to take responsibility for the risks. Is that fair to say?
You'd have to ask staff if they're willing to take the responsibility.
They're taking the risk of their recommendation. So Tim, that's a question to you. Would you agree? Let me back up one sec. If, I'm trying to find a new way to look at the problem. And I'm saying identify the risk quotient in the decision making. So what are the inherent risks of your recommendation? And do you think that? And, and what do you think about them?
Well, I, I think one of the risks is exactly what Councilmember Landry said is, is if escalation out, outstretches what we currently believe it may. So, so if we get to a point, you know, we're going to continue to, to work with, with the architect to make sure that we are within budget as we move along. We're going to make, you know, we're going to adapt as we move along. So once we get to bid documents, we'll have a project that is estimating within budget. But if, but if we get high bids, then there is that risk of delay and additional, additional costs. So for that redesign, so that, that is the risk there. You know, I guess some, that, that would be the risk with design bid build. I think that's the biggest risk in, in, in my view is not locking in that price now. You know, and with, with design build, there is still a risk that you're going to lock in that price and then prices like lumber are going to start going to trajectory down like they are right now. So there is that possibility that you wouldn't, you won't be able to add in, add alternates that you could have if things start dropping off. So there is a risk there as well. And then, you know, like, like we saw on, on the library, there are some additional things even after the thirty percent stage that you still are interested in. You know, whether it's the weatherproofing, landscaping. So there is some design control that is still at issue. I, I would say, I, you know, I think that back in February two thousand twenty, there was a, an RFQ to see what design build entities would be interested in this project. And there was a, a lot of interest. There was ten, ten design build entities. All of them were partnerships between a contractor and an architect firm. So there is architecture to be done, but yes, it, it's not, it's not what you'd call really original architecture. It's working with the, the builder on, on finding ways to innovate and, and bring down the cost of the project. It's, and, and working within the boundaries of the bridging documents. So there is some loss of design control. And then either way, there's, there's risks of escalation or de-escalation. I know that probably didn't help either, but that's how I would respond to the question.
So I, I'm just asking perhaps Councilmember Lopez, do you understand why I was, I'm trying to reframe the question? And, and just say, does that help you? You said design build. And you, and if I recall correctly, you said design build because you thought it was, it minimized the risk of cost and schedules, sort of what I took from what you said.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
Okay, I'm open to someone giving me some help here on how to move the conversation forward.
Okay, I'll help you move the conversation forward. I'm not ready to say to go low bid tonight.
Councilmember Lopez.
Decision, if this decision were made at either the next meeting or the meeting after, I would feel a better comfort level.
I would feel a better comfort level when we see the DD documents and the estimate.
Well, if, if, if I could jump in just for purposes of process, I'm hearing at least one of you saying they would prefer design build. Two of you are saying you're not comfortable making that decision tonight. We would certainly add a follow-up discussion on this item when we bring the item in September with the DD item to you. But, but there will be some, some delay in that process until we ramp up after that decision point. So I think we've covered that. I'm not trying to overplay that. I'm just trying to explain what the, what the outcome would be and how we proceed from here this evening.
What, how much delay?
No, it would be a month. It's basically, it's the second meeting in September. So it's basically four weeks.
We, we would just wait until that meeting, that decision was made to be able to process the contract amendments that were necessary with LPA. And so after they've completed their design development documents, it would be on standstill until we give them some notice to proceed in either, in either method.
I, I, as I've said, my level of confidence with LPA is very low. Their cost estimate, my experience with their cost estimates is, is not very positive. So I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling with design bid build because of the risk down the line. I just, that, if, if push comes to shove right now, that's probably the core of the core of the core of my reason for not wanting to make a design bid build decision tonight. I don't have confidence in how they put numbers together and scope together to date. So, and I'm, I'm falling back on design build. It, to some extent, I'm leaning design build because we will get a schedule and a cost that's firm and that we can meet the obligations to the, to the taxpayers. I mean, that's.
Someone make a motion. See what that happens.
I, I'll just make a comment that it seems like we may not be able to move forward tonight and with, while I understand the very legitimate concerns that have been brought up that I'm very concerned about.
Could we, could I propose this? And I appreciate I'm answering my question, but perhaps for others. Could we in two weeks and the first meeting in, in September? I mean, LPA is putting together their presentation of the DD documents for the second meeting. I would assume that they are making progress on the cost estimate. So would it be possible at the first meeting in September to have an update, a detailed presentation and update about the cost estimate and the remaining design decisions? What, what they, what they feel their bridging documents puts at risk in the way of design control? I mean, I disagree with a lot of things, but I don't want PD not to get the building they need. So I'm trying to find a way to get us there or to get me to be able to support it. So my thought is, how are they doing with the cost estimate? And what is, maybe simply, what is their definition of the content of bridging, bridging documents such that design decisions are, are left to the design build builder?
And I guess just to complicate, and I hesitate to even do this, you know, I'm not sure. You know, certainly you bring LPA and they're going to get their, their opinion and their preference. And, and we've been careful to make this a council decision, not an LPA decision.
I know.
That may be the information you need and we'd be glad, I, I don't know that we can deliver that in two weeks. And, and I, I question, and I haven't had that constant conversation with LPA or with Todd or with Tim. We could explore that, but.
Sorry to interrupt, Brian, but we're not getting anywhere. We're looking for a way to move forward.
Yeah.
I'm proposing this. If they can't do it, then they can't do it. But could they, can you, can you ask? Do you have a cost estimate? Even if it's a draft of what's coming in two weeks after? Can you give, and of where, where they stand with design decisions? And what, what's remaining of design decisions and the cost estimate?
I don't think we need drawings, Brian.
No, we, no drawings, no, no.
I, I, that's clear. I, I know, and I just don't know that we can commit to do that, but we can ask and I can commit to that. I'm just, Larry, really, that, we've got a week to turn that around and publish, publish that report by next Wednesday, by week from tomorrow. So.
I don't know else, what else to do. There's not enough agreement at the, with the council members right now.
I understand the efforts, trying to see how quickly we can keep moving on this.
Well, and I'm trying to find a way to break, break through what each of us is saying. What, what will help each of us move either stick with where we are or change?
Um, Brian, can we have another interim meeting between the two in September? That gives them an extra week. And then we're still, they come for with DD and the, the last meeting in December. Have three in September. Does that help?
We can, I, I'm just, I, I just can't commit. I, and, and I'm more than willing to, to go down that path and inform the council what the outcome is. But I, I can't commit without talking with LPA and, and working through the timing of that.
And, and I will just put one other point out there. But two, three months ago, they said that they would meet with me to go over the cost estimate because I wasn't comfortable with it. They never have. They said they would go over the structural systems. They never have. So it's hard for me, hard for me to have confidence in what they're doing. it's hard for me, hard for me to have confidence in what they're doing. So I just, I just need more help. And I'm, I'm using design build as a fallback. Councilmember Bobby, any thoughts to how to move this forward?
It sounds like there might be consensus for a design build. Maybe somebody should make a motion.
My motion would be to come back in two weeks, three weeks. I I I think we've raised enough questions, Brian. The staffing piece and the construction management, what's that going to cost? I mean, I, there's too many unanswered questions from mine. And I know Gary's probably chewing his fingernails off right now. Sorry, Gary. I, I just.
Okay, I haven't.
Really worried about the budget. I'm really worried about our bids a year from now.
I know. I have a suggestion. Let us adjourn this topic. Come back in two weeks with the same report and information. And if staff has any additional information based on the comments and questions here, it can augment what's in here, but that eliminates the need for an additional staff report and all of that. But I I don't think it would hurt for us to take a break, regroup, have staff regroup. And I think we, it's not going to do us any good to keep running around in circles here. We need, we need to let it go two weeks and just come back with the same staff report and just complete the discussion. All of us will be prepared to make a decision to the best of our abilities with our questions answered by staff in the meantime, or whatever. Does that sound okay?
I support that.
Sergio.
It's it's not my preference, but I think it may be the best option before us.
Councilmember Bobby.
It's it's not my, my choice either, but but again, I, it's important that we all have some comfort in the decision that we make and vote on. So
Yeah.
if 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 you feel that two weeks is going to help you get there, then.
Yeah, I just don't think we're going to get there tonight. Okay. All right. So you've heard all of us give different perspectives. I appreciate, I think we've had a very good conversation. I think it's helpful to know why each of us is thinking what we're thinking and what our big picture concerns are. And I think staff gave a good overview of what the pros and cons are. But I think we also learned what we don't know. And maybe, I think Councilmember Bobby had a good comment, which is we're going to have construction managers one way or the other. I mean, as I said, if that's the case, that somewhat simplifies it. Not what I wanted to hear, but it somewhat simplifies it. Okay, ready? We shall move on. Shall we take a few minute break? It's now eleven o'clock. All right. And are we okay to postpone item eleven and move on to item twelve? Which is the time sensitive one? Calendar time sensitive one? Brian, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I think eleven somewhat time sensitive with continuing work with the contractor. I guess I would turn to Todd on the impact if we wait on that. Is that if we push that off for two weeks, is that gonna be a deal breaker on JDM?
Uh, well, it's not optimal. I mean, you know, given the last discussion, and I don't know, I mean, we've got other things to do now in the meantime. So you you know, I mean, it's a little disconcerting because when council asks staff to put together the the staff that's going to put that together, everybody that's doing that is on this call. So you know, it's nice if we can take items and resolve them and move forward, but if the council's preferences to push that one down the line, I suppose we can do that, but it's all teed up and ready to go. So.
All right. Let, may I ask, we take at least a five-minute break and we'll come back and make the decision when we come back, while we're a little bit fresher. Okay, adjourn to eleven fifteen. Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We have, yes, we have Vice Mayor Resnikov back. Vice Mayor, we were just starting a conversation. I was suggesting that we postpone item number eleven. Staff would prefer to go forward with it. Are you okay with that?
I prefer to go forward and try to get through it. And I think we also have some staff here probably that have sat through four hours waiting for it. So in fairness to them, too, I'm guessing maybe LA is here other than Todd Capers. So I can't see any others. I I personally go for it.
Okay, I did suggest earlier that we do it. Um, okay, is everyone else comfortable moving forward with item over eleven?
Can we do twelve first?
At this point, we might as well just do eleven. Okay. Todd, you have your wish. Go for it.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'm turning it over to Amy.
Amy.
Thank you.
Is the value.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbons, and members of the city council. I appreciate that we're keeping this item. Let me begin with just a very brief background, kind of, you know, understanding the time constraint that we have. In August twenty nineteen, the city entered into a contract with Verdi Design to provide design and construction support services for the John D. Morgan All-Inclusive Playground Project, which is funded by the Santa Clara County All-Inclusive Playground Grant and City Park Dedication Funds. So after winning the contract to Bachman Construction, the project began construction in January of twenty twenty one and was originally scheduled to complete construction in early August. However, due to the pandemic and the impact of COVID nineteen pandemic, the availability of raw materials, manufacturing resources, and shipping were impacted. This then led to construction contractor requesting for material substitutions and extended delivery schedules for some of the equipment so as to as far out as the end of September for delivery. So despite these setbacks, I do want to say that the construction continued by adjusting the schedule to accommodate the delayed deliveries and managed to keep change orders to a minimum. So not uncommon with construction over a site with pre-existing utilities and conditions, some few complications began to surface as we started with the demolition and clearing of the site. So, for example, undocumented existing underground utilities and unexpected tree roots were exposed. So that means that these unforeseen situations had an impact on the overall construction schedule. So what that means is that with an extended construction period, Verdi Designs contract now is in need of an amendment to increase the compensation amount to allow them to continue providing construction management and engineering, construction engineering support for the remaining few months. There is still much left with the construction that requires Verdi and its consultants' support. And due to the substantial amount of additional hours required to address these unforeseen items during construction, the original contract amount has been exhausted. I would note that Verdi Designs involvement with construction support of this project is much more involved than the typical due to the nature of the requirements of the county grants. The original agreement with Verdi is in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A sixty thousand dollars increase to the agreement is necessary to complete the project in accordance with the scope identified in the Santa Clara County All-Inclusive Playground Grant. Since Council's prior authorization is up to four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and only four hundred and twenty thousand was awarded to Verdi, staff is seeking council to approve a budget adjustment of fifty thousand from the Park Dedication Fund and authorized Director of Public Works to amend the agreement. So that's, that's, that's a brief kind of background on this, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Nicely done. Do we have questions at this time? Councilmember Lopez.
I just wanted to clarify the fiscal impact that's in the staff report. Is the entirety of the amount listed coming from the city parks fund or is any amount of that still coming from the matching grant?
So at this point, it's coming from the parks fund. So with this particular grant is a bit complicated in 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 what they cover and what they don't cover. So it is our goal that when we do submit for the final cost accounting, we will put in as much that would be eligible. So we will try to reclaim some of this, but there isn't a full guarantee. Just, you know, it's just the intricacies of this particular grant and how it was formulated.
I understand. Got it. Thanks.
I have Councilwoman Landry.
Um, so the root problem was discovered in the beginning of design.
In the beginning of design, in the beginning of design, the design team, including the city arborist, walked the site, tried to identify any potential issues. And the root situation here was not something that anyone was saw during the site visit.
What was the construct, what was the contractor's change order amount for the root problem?
I don't have that number in front of me. I'm sorry for that particular change order.
And the same goes for the irrigation changes.
Again, I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you that so far and the way we anticipate closing out this project is that we will probably leave at least fifty percent of the contingency on the table. So for a project of this magnitude, we are, I would say, doing pretty well in terms of using up the contingency. The was roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand. We're looking at using up no more than sixty thousand.
And we can't use the contingency money for the design money?
You're asking then using the contingency towards amending this agreement? We, that may not be advisable at this point. I think the best course is to add in the 60,000, the 50,000, I'm sorry, from Parks Dedication Fund. And at the end of the project, we have that amount left, then we just return it back to the funding source. Because we are still going through construction, that is our anticipated that we will use 50% of it, but at this time, it may be too early to be touching that for other things outside of construction contracts.
Okay. I'll go ahead and ask my questions. Amy, these are intended to be very simple, almost yes or no questions. You, in your presentation, you, you said something that dropped, drew my attention to this. They have been, Verdi has been charging against the projects straight through. They, but their original scope of work, they're not on a T and M contract, right?
No, they're not.
So, so they have an obligation to finish certain tasks within their budget. So when you say that they're out of money to complete their work, strictly speaking, they've been charging to the project for work that they weren't authorized to do. So they've used up money assigned to other tasks.
That's not completely correct, just because of a lot of things that have arisen during construction that has required additional time from Verdi, which was approved by the city.
Okay, so clarify, what was approved by the city when? And is the council playing catch up? So could you clarify what additional services they provided when that was authorized by the city?
Okay, so as some of these unforeseen site conditions came up, the, for instance, I'm just gonna give you an example, like the comm line that is under the existing place structure. That was an issue that was raised early on. And we were aware of that situation. We, we designed to the best of our abilities. We actually even did a sonar for the depth of that situation. Because the tower was sitting on top of the communication line, that's really.
Amy, yeah, sorry, sorry. I don't mean for you to go to spend the time. I'm just trying to ask a very simple question. Did staff authorize Verdi Design to do additional scopes of work, knowing that there was no budget to cover that scope?
Well, I would have to say that staff did authorize Verdi to proceed with any additional work so that we can continue with construction.
And did you do it on a T and M or a lump sum? How did you establish the cost?
Based on their bid amount, that's how we determined it. We did a month-to-month cost accounting. And it's just because now the schedule is being delayed that we're looking at two and a half months. So that equates to like 20 something thousand dollars a month.
Okay, all right. I think, thank you. Appreciate it. If there are no further questions, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, not this time.
Thank you. Close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion. Councilwoman Landry?
I was waiting to see if anybody else wanted to say anything. Okay, I take issue with the roots of the trees. I've known for a long time, redwood trees have lateral roots. I did a search last week, 30 different websites all say redwood tree root system spread laterally outward intertwined into a sophisticated root system. I went out and looked at the grades of the sidewalk in relation to the crown of the tree, and it's down 12 inches. Then you got the thickness of the concrete. Of course, you're gonna hit roots regardless of whatever, the taproot is not on a big redwood tree. They go down eight to 10 feet. All redwood trees spread out and that's what holds the tree up and they intertwine, the little suckers come off. So I take issue with that to start with. I also take issue with that. You just brought up the comm line. That was not in your memo. And that comm line has been a boogaboo for me from day one, that that structure sits on top of the comm line to the tower, of the communication tower. That footing was redesigned. You guys answered my question. That whole entire footing was redesigned and the comm line was not at the elevation. I can't help but think a lot of this time is at the comm line, not just on the roots and irrigation. And from what I was told, the change orders for irrigation and roots were only $4,000. And for $4,000, we're asking for $60,000 in extra services. And then you said, we have a contingency of 135,000, but we've only used about half of that. So I don't know where the other half goes if you only have change orders to $4,000. So I'm very reluctant to award an additional $60,000 to this project. I, I, these decisions were made early on. And you just said that Verdi was given authorization to proceed with work. And we were not told early on that there was gonna be this problem. So I am not going to support the $60,000.
Now, if there's no other comments, I'll make a comment. So I am having difficulty supporting it too. And so I was trying to, trying to understand the sequence of the decision-making that, you know, if you have unknown site conditions and you're dealing with them, you, the typical experience is that the design team identifies, we need to resolve this, it's going to be associated with a contractor change order and our time is going to be 10 hours or we'll do it as a T and M, not to exceed. And it gets approved as it goes. And I'm getting the impression, and maybe I still haven't gotten quite the, the right picture, it seems like you, they've been allowed to just keep spending up to their contract limit. And now they don't have enough money, money left to finish the contract scope that they were originally contracted to do. So we're playing catch up. Am I missing something, Amy?
Well, all the work that they've completed is within the scope. And because, because of additional hours that were spent on things that have come up early on on the project as well, that additional items that require them to address, it could be from questions that we've received, either from council or other questions that we've gotten, have really increased the amount of hours that was originally planned.
So I still, I don't dispute that that may have happened, but I still don't understand why the change orders weren't affected at that time. Why, why are we at this point now?
I guess I'm trying to understand the question, change orders versus the time that the design consultant, you see.
So, so, all right, I don't want to belabor the point. I'm trying to find enough information to support the requested amount or some amount. I'm, I'm in alignment with Councilwoman Landry at the moment. I'm trying to find a way to get beyond that. I understand that there are unanticipated situations. There are everywhere in, in most jobs. But when you run across those as a design team, construction man, you, construction service, because I forget the word you used, construction services. If you allocate 100 hours and you found you're spending 200 hours, you know, you're running out of your 100 hours, you notify your client that the site conditions are exceeding my contract scope for unknown conditions and I'm gonna need more funds. And you do that, I'm gonna say concurrently with the situation as it arises. And so now it seems like we're at the, close to the end of the job and oops, we're out of money. So we gotta go back and justify additional fees. And you always question why you're, you're doing it retroactively. If you do it in the same timeframe, you go, okay, that's what it is, you just move on. But now it looks like we're looking backwards, trying to come up with a way to justify additional funds. So that's where I'm confused. Okay, Council Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Thank you. Excuse me, I think there's two questions here. So let me, Amy, let me ask you one first. What is the impact of not having this extra money? What will that do to the project completion-wise, time-wise, et cetera?
Well, that would mean that Verdi Design would not be involved anymore. And we would then, would need to then reassign to all city staff to cover. And a lot of the design has come from Verdi. I mean, staff could, city staff could take on this project to the end, but you're still talking about resources that's coming somewhere.
So what would the difference be in the timeframe of the project?
It'll probably get delayed.
Can you suggest for how long?
Probably instead of completing in October, we're probably looking, you know, with, with other, with other projects and workload from staff, you're probably looking pushing it out at least by two months or more.
Potentially weather-wise more. So, so.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
This is two things. One is, can we, can we justify $60,000 on a $2 million project to get the thing done on time? And I'm okay with that. And I'm not happy about it. I'm, I'm okay in the scheme. I think the questions we've heard so far were more about how did we get here? The process, the procedure, what happened? Why didn't we know? And how do we make sure this never happens again? And those are valid, right? Those are very valid. But at this point, I think for the amount, I will support getting this project done. And I think concurrently.